Okay, it is six oh three P M on April twenty ninth, uh, twenty twenty four. Officially calling our, uh, special meeting to order. Uh, Denise, can you do a roll call please?
Sure.
Just last one?
Mary Ellen?
Yeah, present?
Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Here.
Trustee Hanselman?
Here.
Trustee Walried?
Here.
Trustee Sauer?
Here.
Trustee Alter? Absent right now. Trustee Shetty.
Yes, we'll, we'll mention for the record when he arrives. Uh, also, Absol right now is our village attorney. She is actually at a zoning and planning board meeting simultaneously as we speak. Um, but present is the train going through as it typically does during our meetings.
On the zoning, if anybody cares on the zoning.
Go for it.
Agenda is, um. Chico's fences.
Yeah.
And Jason's mother's house.
Did I share, did I email you guys the notices that we crafted?
No.
My apologies, I had meant to do that.
No, I know we talked about.
Yep, let me show you this real fast. Uh, we had created. We created templates for the, for Olivia to use for village board zoning and, and, um, planning. Um, and what I'll do is I'll just show you these on the screen right now so that, uh, Olivia has something she can work off of. Um, I feel like Elena Opines, but it was basically already confirmed what we had said, which is doing. Oh, there's, okay. Um, so here is the. This is, this is the one for the planning board. So just a couple of things that we've done differently. I'm putting planning board up in big letters. I'm trying to bold face certain things so they stick out. Um, and for the planning board, we actually are being specific about what's going on for both boards. So this one says for purposes of receiving an information update from Stewart shop regarding their potential future projects. And to review an application bar and bake for a bar and bakery at twenty four Classic Street.
If we, should there just be a line in there just for the future and other, other issues that may come up?
I asked Elena that and she didn't comment on that yet, but I'll ask her that when I talk.
Yeah, just to get if somebody comes up, we can do it at that meeting, but we can't.
Yep. Yep. Um, we have the date spot for it and Olivia is.
But then we can ask noticing it, so.
Olivia is gonna be the contact person for this, so it would be her name on it, so she'll do that in the future.
So Rob, will you be putting in the purpose in a meeting or will Mark be putting in the agenda?
With the notice, that really would be Mark or the chair talking to Olivia and making sure that's right. And Olivia, once she's more comfortable with this, will be the kind of the, the arbiter to say, oh, we actually need more information or something like that. And she can reach out to Elena as well.
And we have to appoint chairs here.
Yeah.
Yes, and I, I talked to Elena today about that. Um. Uh, we know that Aaron was already acting chair for planning. And I think it's our intention to do that at the next, uh, meeting. Uh, um. I don't think that they have a specific person who wants to be at the chair permanently for zoning, so that's sort of in question right now.
Yeah, well, we have somebody who will be, two people who would like to be, um, and.
But they're gonna be part of the people who have to recuse themselves from one of the major items. Okay.
Yeah, I guess.
So, uh, Elena did review the law on this and they will appoint their own chair tonight as part of their opening, part of the meeting, and that's per meeting.
Oh, also, somebody was left off.
What's that?
I have to remind, I have to let her know, somebody Sean Nealon was left off the planning board list.
I think he actually stepped down already.
He did? I thought, Aaron didn't know that, but that, that may be.
No, I'm pretty sure he stepped down. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Um, so this is the zoning one, just to finish this off. I won't open it because I don't need to, but obviously zoning board of appeals is on top. Um, now this one, uh, this one I got, I confirmed with, with Mark. For the purposes of reviewing three fence related variance requests, and we're putting in the street address. And to review a variance request to build a house at seven Husick Street and in parentheses, in commercial industrial zoning.
Yes, I think they.
Because that's stating exactly why the business has gone to the zoning board of appeals, because it's out of compliance and we need to have approval from them.
Yep. That's good because people who can read the whole thing and say, oh, that's my neighborhood, I'm gonna like go inspect it.
Yep. Yep. Um, and then the last one is, well, just the, the, the same one we used for this evening. But that's just this one here, the village. That's just a special menus notice. Hey, sir, how are you? Um, so.
Oh, I didn't recognize you.
It looks like a park register.
So these are the notices, uh, right now, and Elena had mentioned, because we had asked about the zoning board. Um, we don't. So it stays the last zoning board meeting, the zoning board meeting notices need to be more detailed to actually save the information, which we did. Um, otherwise, there's no notice to the nearby affected property owner. So as long as we're doing the notices the way we are now. We don't, there's no legal requirements to whether we decide to do it later or not, that's, that's fine. Okay.
I have an extra bulletin board, by the way. I'm probably gonna put out lobby.
What size?
So that we can put these notices on, and plaster them on the door.
Mm-hmm. I actually have a whole massive ideas of making, using not just the case that opens and shuts, but other locations that's specific to village board. Planning and zoning, court times and dates and information, because we need to get that information present in a main lobby.
I, I think, um. And I don't know how formal it was, but when Buell built that building, I think part of the agreement was that, that. Entry area into Mike's, into the coffee shop. It was for community notices and stuff.
Oh.
And Mike is, Mike is spraying anyway.
This, you guys didn't know what she's talking about?
I might spray anyway. You could put anything up, you'd be fine with it.
Okay. Okay. All right, all right, so, um, so budget information. Um, so at this point, um, I want to, wanna quickly review what we have changed and modified. From our last meeting, the only change Denise made was.
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer, which was just, uh, distributing, was it the?
The extra treasurer.
The extra treasurer salary. Otherwise, nothing here, uh, has significantly changed, or nothing else has changed except from where we were at last time. So last time, I think we made our way through the entire general funds. We had made adjustments on the utility tax and income. Uh, building permit miscellaneous code violations, registration fees and court fines, which we had talked about and really good discussions on that. Um, if you want me to go back on the screen, and I know it's super hard to be the person watching the screen when everyone, when one person is modifying and everything else is, so feel free to. Ask questions, speak up or tell me to go back. Um.
Just Rob?
Yeah, sure.
Do we need to revisit the, the code registration fee generally gathered list of vacant properties?
Not a bad idea.
We didn't have that, we didn't have.
We did not, yeah.
And I don't know.
Uh, that's your star button, so just click away from it and it'll go away. Uh, click, um, that thing down there. There you go.
There we go. As well, you had asked, um, to split the inspection fees apart from the building permits themselves.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't do anything here, but I, I figured we could do it tonight.
Sure, 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 sure.
So the actual building permit number to date for twenty three, twenty four is three thousand two ninety nine.
You're talking, uh.
Building permits, the twenty five ninety one.
This line right here.
Yeah. So instead of the ninety, ninety one thirty nine, it should be thirty two ninety nine and I, yeah.
Why is this so low?
Well, because we split it apart, the inspection fee at twenty five ninety three.
Oh. Okay, we're changing, we're, we're splitting that number.
Yes. Yeah.
And where's the other one going?
Tw- uh, that's twenty five ninety three.
Uh, right here, what's going in there?
Yeah, it was a new line. That is five thousand eight forty.
So we've taken that original number and split it over too?
Oh, right.
Awesome. Thank you, which means I should be able to take this formula. Uh, nope, it did not work. Uh, why didn't that not work? Nope. I gotta see what the formula is. Oh, you know why? Because. Uh, this is the eight month, right? Eight month actual. So I need to grab a. Um, what am I gonna multiply this by to make it, um?
For the rest of the year?
Yeah.
One point three three.
Thank you. So what I've done here is I've updated what the formula would be for the anticipated yearly number, which is column N right here. So since we split out the numbers, what we're expecting is with the new split, this is what we should anticipate for the rest of the year. To finish off the last four months that aren't in the, uh, eight month actuals. So with that in mind, how do you guys wanna adjust these two numbers here, the building permit number and the inspection number?
Eight and five. Sense to me, but.
So Brett's thinking eight thousands and five thousand. And I think that, um, that makes sense to me too, and it's also, um, reflective of the fact that we're gonna have, we're planning on having additional co-op, so there should be more coming in. Comments, questions, thoughts on that?
Sounds good.
All right, Doug, what did you wanna, uh, was that what you wanted to talk about?
Now, uh, the, um, registration fee income. We, that's the one we bumped up a lot. I think we were talking there were like seventy buildings.
Oh, that was this one, right? The court fines fees?
That's what we had thought.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's the one above it. Okay.
And I don't know, has Mark heard of that number, you know?
I don't think so.
What's that?
The anticipating twenty thousand dollars.
He doesn't know about that number, even the budget. Mark doesn't know that.
Which number, the inspection?
The twenty thousand.
The twenty thousand.
This isn't.
No, um, he was thinking that somebody was gonna contact him as far as where the slots were and the fees, the fines. That's why he and I took this last billing and kind of went back over it because things have changed since the last time we did it in twenty one. So, um.
So then, then the question is, well, we'd have to set the fees. We talked about setting it at a thousand. Now, if we did that. How many of those buildings do you think is realistically we could get that cash in this year? That's really the question, right?
Um, right, how many?
I don't.
Were there two of them that were for sale?
Could we figure half? Could we figure a third?
So I guess his question though, was him and I discussing it? With the, the actual wording on the law?
Yeah.
Um, meaning, will just the vacant properties be fined? The ones that are marked actually vacant?
It'll be fined, that's, that's, that's the, um.
Or the registration fee.
Yeah, the registration, let's, yeah, let's call it registration.
Okay.
Because words matter sometimes.
So I just didn't, you know, based on that, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
The registration.
And we said we're gonna make the registration fee how much?
That makes sense.
We talked about a thousand.
Thousand, we.
Yeah, we wanted to make it various, that's, that's the only rule we have here.
And there was a definition of, right, well, they had to be vacant for so long, so I don't know if all these properties on this list hits that definition.
Oh, no, they definitely don't because of some of them, well, I shouldn't say vacant for so long, but some of them say, well, just reasonably sold, so we can't really do that, take those into account.
Has to be in five minutes after, after they close them.
And then you also have, if someone has a rehab in progress, they have a permit, that's not.
That, that doesn't count, so long as they're working on it, that's fine.
Right.
That's a point.
So that's in your, to my net list?
It's on your, Mark, everything, yes. Yep. Did you get a copy of that?
Yeah, I did, I bring my class.
Okay. Oh, okay.
I mean.
Yeah.
Oh, but that was in an email, right?
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
Yeah.
So.
So it looks, there's about twenty one, twenty two, twenty three of them on here that say just be again.
I'm the. Just a total?
Yeah.
Twenty three?
Yeah.
So we, we figured we could.
In re- in actual payments, right?
Yeah.
And so you're talking, well, that's what, twenty three thousand, but if.
No, if there's twenty, I'm thinking.
We'd get half.
Half and a inch, we'd be like twelve, eleven.
Eleven and a half.
Eleven and five, yeah.
Which might be a more reasonable number than, you know, twenty three in this fiscal year.
Forty, right.
Yeah. I still think that's probably high. I'd be surprised if we got that money, but I still, I think that's still good to budget for. I would, I would be pleasantly surprised if we hit that, but I think, I think it's a responsible budget number.
Especially, I guess, in this fiscal year, we'll only have, well, it's not gonna be this fiscal year. You're talking this twenty four, twenty five, that's the current one.
They'd be talking. Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So eleven five is what I'm hearing?
So if we, if we, this in June, for example, they pay for that year, the money goes into this year.
Yep.
Right.
I mean, but I think we have to tell people, you guys living out there and.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so maybe we figure like eleven or twelve tops?
I'm fine with, I have eleven and five in, I'm fine if that's what you guys want.
Okay.
Yep, that works.
All right.
And they end up getting more building, uh, building permits if they're doing something to building and we ramped up.
That's true, that's true, and building permits are a lot cheaper than having to pay that every year. All right, um.
That's true.
The other thing we had was the state revenue sharing number, which we had modified. We added the twenty one thirty nine in it, which was, uh, the extra state aid, the temporary state aid, because the state isn't gonna give us extra funding. So that final number, which I will highlight with a different color because it should be, is, uh, this for total income anticipated. We went through all the expense lines. I'm just gonna quickly, quickly summarize. Uh, trustees, courts, mayor, um, we don't have to pay an auto anymore. We have the treasurer line plus extra money for, uh, this is the number that you changed, right? No, you changed it in water and sewer. You didn't change these. Okay.
Right, right, no.
Um, assessor, clerk, I had put in the line for a possible data web person service thing, but I have left that blank at this point. So I'm just gonna highlight that as something I don't wanna forget to discuss. That's the only, only reason I'm highlighting that. We added four thousand dollars for code enforcement. If I'm going too fast, if you wanna stop or ask questions, just interrupt me, please. Uh, nothing of note here. Um, public safety, we put in the equipment number of fifty eight nineteen, and that corresponded to fixing the A E D number from four hundred to four thousand. Cause that was an error I had made clerically, uh, but we still have on the table any of those things to discuss. Um, police contractual is all there, uh, dog control. Which I wanna make sure we have, um, someone ready and lined up as an appointment and future organization meeting. Um, which will, should be the first, we've been supposed to put in an organizational meeting because we're reviewing. Things to update them and make sure they're correct slash in compliance. Um, but we're looking at hopefully having it early May, the, the regular May meeting. But knowing that we have two trustees who aren't gonna be there, I wanna make sure that you guys are good with it, um, and we'll do that over email. Uh, summer help, did you ever, by chance, mention at Tackany that we're only budgeting for basically two people?
I did not.
All right, I didn't either. Um, vehicle repair we have here. Uh, snow contractual, we upped because we thought the estimate, which was based off of this year, was wonderful, but probably not likely unless we get another. Lack of snow year like we did here.
I'm not gonna lie, I laughed when I saw that number blank.
It was a great year for not having snow, great year.
That's hopeful.
I sent an email to God requesting that, uh, we have the same amount of snow days and during workdays.
Yeah, I used to deal with all that, so I know what that number should be.
Yeah. So, yeah, so right now, in general, we, um, are, if we spend all of, all of the money that we're setting, we are gonna be over by forty five thousand three hundred and forty seven. Which I feel like is not as bad as it was when we had started, but. Any questions on general? You wanna hop into water or sewer next?
Do you, do you, well, we probably don't know yet, you know, we don't know what that being over forty five thousand means to.
The tax cap.
Tax cap, right.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, Denise, cause again, this is not my most comfortable zone. What that means is basically we are agreeing to also offset this with forty five thousand three hundred and forty seven of, of fund balance.
Right.
To make sure that we are balancing everything out.
So not necessarily a taxing.
Right, we don't have to change, yeah.
So we don't exceed the limit?
Right.
Well, it would be the tax increase to the extent that we're allowed.
Yeah, so right now, back up here.
But nothing over the cap.
We've, we've done, we've, we've estimated, we've put in that we're going to do up to the tax cap and no higher. If we wanted to change that, we'd have to change it in this number, but no one wants to.
Okay.
Yep, so right now, what we're doing is we're committing to saying, if we spend every single thing in the budget. We're going to also commit an extra forty five thousand three hundred and forty seven from fund balance to balance it off, and thus we have a balanced budget.
And we have three fifty, three sixty in the general fund fund balance, I think.
Yeah.
Projected anyway.
I've got that in here somewhere.
I saw, yeah, you sent an email, right?
And we know that that fluctuates.
It was just super fund out, that was the concern, that's the concern, but, yeah.
Yeah, yes. Well, is water easier? Or do you, do you wanna do any other thing in general right now, or just go to water?
That can be, yeah.
Okay. All right, then in that case, we're gonna shift gears and talk water budget.
There's, I think one thing that I don't know if we talked about last time, and I've spoken to John about it.
Sure, go for it. Yep.
Is there server? I don't know if we, if we sat and talked about the.
Absolutely.
The idea of replacing that and getting them, one less one at the end of life.
Yep. So if we committed, uh, eleven thousand for a server, that would simply increase that budget line by eleven thousand and increase our fund balance. Uh, additional fund balance by eleven thousands. So, and it's totally our decision to do that, so if you guys say as a collective, yes, we wanna do this because we see it as important, then it will happen.
Okay. That's something I feel is important.
Sure. Any other thoughts? Bobby, Brett, Doug, Deb.
So all those, we're gonna talk about them later after we go through the other budget.
We, we don't, we can do it now, we can do it later, it doesn't, it's whatever.
It was in general, so I.
Works for you guys.
Okay.
If you guys wanna say right now collectively, you think it's worth putting it in there and making it happen, then we will do it.
I think if it's end of life, we're better doing it than having a crisis.
Yeah.
We don't have ARPA money anymore, we don't have.
Not enough.
Right.
We don't have enough. How much is new server total?
This is eleven thousand, that'll be, um, not just a new server, but installation costs, and I feel like.
There'll be the server, backup server.
And then what's the annual? We, we can create that anyway, right? We got, we're paying it now.
What, annual for the?
Like, for the server, there's no, no for.
There may be a couple of small subscription things, but that's not a big deal. Um, and I, and there, there, a lot of these are noted in here, like this firewall example is one of them. And I will say to, to John's point and to the point of, of getting a new server, we did this ourselves in the village side and we have, um. A, a ba- separate backup. We have a solid firewall. Um, so that is kind of what John is looking to establish in the police department, so.
Our fire, we have to replace the firewall too, but we're gonna, we're trying to re, through the budget.
Yeah.
Um, cause ours is, so what happens is with Ty Moore came in, cause we noticed that everything was going very slow. So Ty Warner came in, they replaced their modem and their router. And they said, okay, our issue is perfectly fine, and then while the tech was there, he actually tested our firewall. Which is outside of the purview, but he did it, and he said, your firewall is literally throttling the services down big time.
Because the firewall is so old, it can't handle the traffic that is available to spectrum.
It's a, it's a great firewall, it's a, it's a crime analysis center.
Yeah.
But it's just so old that.
That's the exact same problem we had when we upgraded our infrastructure. Our, um, network switch was slower than what we could do with internet. Because of the great, great and wonderful gains by Spectrum.
So I support putting it in, yeah.
So, yes, all right, I'm gonna add this in here. Whoop, that's the wrong number, I'm not gonna add it there, I'm gonna add it here. Nope. Apparently I'm new to typing. Sixty one eight nineteen fifty. And let me change, uh, where's police again?
It's gonna be three one two zero.
Sixty one eight nineteen fifty, was that the number? Sweets. And that means we are now, uh, over fifty six three forty seven. Which is fine. Certainly have more to talk about, but that's fine. All right, anything else general?
No.
Okay. Uh, water, just as a quick refresher, uh, water rates, we changed, um. Uh, where is it? Is this it? Historically, um, we had water rates, um, that had been gone unchanged for a while. The way water rates work is there's a base value, and then the different types of billing that we do are basically a modifier of the base value. Let me zoom in a little bit on the water side, so you can see this a little bit better. Uh, this is it over here. Residential billing is the standard and, and municipal nonprofit is the standard of one X. Residential building outside the village in the town is one point five, so for every thousand gallons, they would pay five dollars and nine cents, in the town, it would be seven sixty three. Um, the blue is in the village and the gray is in the town, by the way, just for the color coding back. Uh, and then you can see the different multipliers for the various items, and if I recall correctly, and it will take me some time to find it. Um, we raised it last year for the first time in quite some time, and we only raised it by a nickel?
Fifteen cents, I think it was.
No, it's five cents. That's it, unless I have the wrong number here, but I'm pretty sure that's what we did.
And I thought it was fifteen. Okay.
I can double check.
And we didn't raise the sewer at all, right?
We didn't raise the sewer at all.
Right.
Now.
Five twenty four is the, is the inside the rate water for village residents.
Oh, then we did, we did do it, and this is an old document.
Five twenty four is the price for a gallon, a thousand gallons.
All right, well, this is great, great, great.
Let me just make sure of that, but yeah.
Sure. You can check that. So this was set up, so whatever number is here duplicates it, so I probably just grabbed an old file and forgot to double check it. Um, Denise is logged into her computer, so she's gonna double check right now.
Barely, yeah.
You get a magnifying glass? Are you on computer?
No. It's just giving me an error. I know it's five twenty four, but why is it not letting me in here? Let me start this sign on again.
So anyway, um, while you're looking for that, um, I did not want to change the water rates on water. I also don't wanna change the water rates on sewer, especially because sewer saw the increase in the sewer bond recently. That was, um, started last year when we had to take on debt for, um, the sewer project. And also, I think the landfill, but I think, you know, we budgeted for the landfill debt.
Five twenty four.
It is five twenty four, um, I'm glad I have that right. So that's just where, where the rates are for water and for sewer, so just wanna kinda give that for context. Feel free to hop, uh, ask to hop back to this.
So are there, are, are there any requirements that just they has and we have to have a certain percentage as a reserve fund? So I, I'm concerned about sewer being down, I think you said the fund balance is down like thirty five thousand dollars or something. That's darn close, and I don't know what happens.
I don't believe so, Doug. I don't know. I can call and ask them.
But what happens if you go below that?
Well, back in the day, we were on the rug, Madame Gerdis days and.
None happened.
No. No.
Is that fund balance currently, right now, or, or that low in sewer?
Yeah.
Is it going to come back up as bills come in? Cause I know that there's a.
That doesn't really have any, any factor on cash flow or anything.
Okay.
I think this for a while, and I wanted to look at this. It seems like our sewer charges for a while kept going up and up, and I think they're kind of plateaued.
Hey, by the way, I don't know why this is, but right now, our sewer differential is only five thousand three hundred.
But I look at that one.
So we can double check the numbers. This is after we, after I made some changes in the initial pre, pre-budget.
For?
Budget, budgeting wise.
For the twenty four, twenty five?
Yeah.
Um.
Right now, I have eight hundred and twenty six anticipated income. And eight thirty one anticipated expense. Super. It did change from when you initially had it.
It was six thirty eight seventy eight, it was. Well, that's because I had to allocate that point seventeen percent of treasurer salary, salary to water and sewer.
Okay.
So I'm assuming that's the difference.
Okay.
Yeah.
So right now, we're actually not looking terrible in sewer.
But, is, from the past years, is to, are we pulling from that fund balance every year for the last four or five years?
Of late, we are.
So are we gonna be projecting that in three years, probably in four years, and we won't have that?
Yes.
Or is there some major equipment item and rail and plumbing source for it?
If, if that came up, we would probably have to go into some sort of short-term debt to, uh, to, to handle the emergency. And then we'd have to budget for that. Um, overall, now the other thing we talked about was the rate at which people who bring, um, their sewer stuff to our plant and pay for that. That has been unchanged since well before my time. Do you remember that rate?
It's cheap.
It's very cheap.
I wanna say seventy five cents a thousand?
That sounds right, and Kenny has always been a little bit concerned that if we up the numbers, then people.
They'll go elsewhere.
Are going out of their way to come here because we're cheaper are gonna go elsewhere. That being said, I don't think, it's not a big deal to say like, throw a nickel at that. It's not a, it's not gonna break the bank on, on folks.
Have we looked at rates in other municipalities to see like in court? Yeah, we have.
We're, we're, we're lower. We're, we're definitely lower.
I mean, can we stay lower and still increase that?
That's why I think maybe we're throwing like an extra nickel at that. Which number is that in the, um? By the way, we, we jumped to sewer, is that okay with us to?
Sewer charges.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, sewer charges.
Yes.
How projected to be, oh, you know what? This is. Eight months is gonna cover June to January, but that's not really a good comparison because the months that aren't comparative, comparing are some of the higher months. March, April and May. Cause in reality, we, our biggest stuff comes in March, April, May, June, July, August, September.
Yeah, I can tell you.
Uh, give me a second to bring up those reports. Let me see what's on the bottom. Nope, too far. No, no, go back, I liked where you were. So, this report is set up to be done over the fiscal year. Um, so actually. Um, we can look at our anticipated numbers here. Um, previously, these are what we've done each year in terms of, um. This is, this is the sludge drop off. This is, um, this is what we take in each year.
Right.
So.
Isn't, is that a mistake on the income though, on the top, like you go nineteen, twenty, twenty one, twenty, twenty, twenty one, twenty one, twenty two, twenty one, twenty two again? Isn't, is that a mistake on the income though, on the top, like you go nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two again?
It should be twenty-two.
Should be twenty-two, twenty-three here.
That should be twenty-two, twenty-three, yeah, I'll have to fix, I must have been doing that for a long time, cause I just re- kind of repeated. I'll fix that, but yeah, that should be twenty-two, twenty-three, just like this one.
So that number over the last three years anyway, they're going up about every two, two, two thousand every year.
Yeah, so.
Just as it is.
So looking at March, we're at one oh one, so our anticipated is actually. Uh higher than the previous three years this year, and we're looking at the end, we've been getting about a hundred eighteen, hundred fifteen, hundred sixteen, hundred forty-four. We should probably anticipate a healthy amount. We probably should be finishing around a hundred and twenty-five.
Twenty, right, one, even if you do ten, if you do the average, it's gonna be one-twenty-ish, right, I mean.
Yep. Now that's without us making the rate change, right?
Right.
And what is the rate change right now?
What's the, what's the current rate?
What's the rate per?
Do you know what the rate, the rate number is?
Yeah, Kenny brings that in and they do it and they say they have it noted. I'm sure.
Wanna text Kenny right now and see, I know he's.
Yeah.
It's not working.
Yeah.
Make this bigger.
Sewer charge.
Thirty-nine thousand seven fifty gallons.
Point zero five zero?
It's nineteen eighty-seven fifty. So one thousand nine eighty-seven fifty divided by thirty-nine thousand seven fifty.
Say that one more time.
Thirty-nine thousand seven fifty divided by a thousand. Okay, so take nineteen eighty-seven fifty and divide that by the thirty-nine you just got.
Thirty-nine.
Nineteen hundred eighty-seven fifty.
Nineteen hundred eighty-seven fifty divided by.
Ah!
One thousand nine eighty-seven fifty.
Yes?
Divided by.
Thirty-nine point seventy.
You better try it.
Oh, yeah.
Fifty cents per thousand.
Alright, so we are fifty cents per thousand right now. Um. Well, first off. First off. That's the sewer, that's sewer charges, right?
Yes.
We've anticipated too low, that's something that I should have caught earlier and didn't. So this number right here is just not right, because there's no, we've already made more than that.
We're almost thirty thousand.
That would be lower than anything in the past five years.
Right, cause we're already at one, one, one oh, one oh one.
You're going to try and budget anywhere at one oh one.
Yeah.
At thirty thousand.
So I think we could probably budget at least a hundred and fifteen or a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, a hundred twenty is.
Better?
I don't have a deficit anymore.
And that's even, that's without a rate increase.
That's without a new rate increase, that's right.
Yeah.
And I'm okay with.
Why, why touch it if we didn't make the money yet, why, do you don't have a risk, it's business.
You lose one guy and he's one of our largest numbers, we're screwed.
Yep. Okay, so right now, we're not gonna talk about rate uh items, my apologies for not having that number correct, I really should have caught that earlier. Um. Is this sewer rent?
Oh, so it's just looking at your formula, I think we got that.
Yes. This one right here?
Okay, yeah. I can barely see.
One thirty-one five forty.
Yeah.
Plus one thirty-one five forty.
Yeah, so those, that was.
Divided by two.
That was August twenty-three, December twenty-three, actual bill. So if you take the average of the two and add it to it, that's what you get for year round.
What?
So the first amount of thirty-one, one fifty.
Yeah.
Is what was billed in.
One thirty-one five forty.
August for sewer.
That was August for sewer.
Yeah, and then you have the one thirty-one five forty.
Yeah.
Or I can't read the screen.
It is, it is, one, it's one thirty-one five forty again, which would be weird that they both be, maybe we didn't have the second one at the time?
No, we didn't.
Alright.
But. I don't think.
You wanna double check that, is there a quick way to bring that up in your books?
Kenny did just actually confirm the fifty cents a thousand.
I gotta separate it out.
Great, okay. Tell him we're raising it to two dollars, just and then and then. And then you can, then then we'll send John to see if he.
Too late, I already told him, we'll leave it.
Okay.
But we can, we can bring it, bring you.
What is it?
Fifty.
We could, yes.
Okay, and I would advise, let's see, let's see what the other rates are, the other minutes, probably a nickel may be nothing after thirty cents difference or something.
Yes.
Fifty cents per thousand.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, we should probably.
A nickel may be nothing after thirty cents difference or something.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
But if Kenny says we're.
He said fifty cents less than the next.
He said, keep it at what it is.
Well, he always says, yeah.
But I still love to see the data, like what are the other rate charges?
I'm not surprised. No, I agree with that, I agree with that, that's solid.
He's gonna make, take me a money here to pass it to himself.
That's fine, that's fine. Uh Denise is gonna double check on sewer uh sewer costs. I think we may be low on this. I don't know why we, I, why I didn't catch this number being lower, because this number is lower than all of our previous actuals.
It is, but the rents for some reason have been decreasing as far as it's based on the usage, so. I don't know, could be.
Oh, and what, well, your eight months actual shows eighty-six nine one four, right, is that correct?
Uh sewer charges?
Well, we're talking.
We're talking about the metered sewer rents.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, alright, okay.
So I'm gonna throw this in a cell here for a minute.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, that's really low. But is that prior to the?
So.
You've only got one more billing and we've got current billing, that's it, right?
Right, but she can look up the previous two and we can get a better, better number there. So anyway, while she's doing that, uh if it's alright with you, uh we can review other items here. Um. Income, so this is the sewer bond charges that we get, and that's always reflective of whatever the rates are, and we've already talked about the fact that most of them. Remain unchanged, but there's one of them that goes up like a dollar, a dollar twenty or something like that every year. Um.
To us, uh uh to the village.
To everybody, yeah, to all, all, all community, so that will just increase by like a dollar at the next, uh whenever that. Whatever, whatever is the restart on the year for that particular debt item.
That's just the interest being added in.
So, yeah, so right now, our total income is uh eight forty-two, seven thirty-five. I'm gonna skip down just to the very bottom of sewer, which fortunately is a lot simpler than the general. Uh we're actually in the plus right now with that change, thirty-nine, seven forty-two, which is great. Um.
Comes close to doubling our fine balance.
Which we need, which we need. Especially if we have to keep replacing parks and the new pump station.
Yeah.
Alright, so um sewer expenses, we can just talk through line by line, or if you guys wanna ask questions, feel free. Uh we have a percentage of the village attorney costs, um overall costs in water and sewer as we have done most other things. Um. We don't have any code in, code items in there, cause there's no need. Uh insurance, Nikon uh dues we split as well. We don't have a contingency, but now that we're looking like we're operating in the red, it would make, or in the, in the, in the positive, not in the red. I'm so used to thinking it's the red. Awkward pause. Um then um we could actually throw some money in contingency, we had done that a long, long time ago, do you remember that? Back when there was extra time and.
Yes.
Okay, so it would be, I think, very valuable to throw in some money. Just as an idea right now, if we threw in ten thousand dollars in contingency to cover us should an emergency happen. Uh that would still have us in the positive by thirty-nine right now.
That was the same.
That was the same, that's not right. Hold on.
Yeah.
Let me check my formulas. Let me check my formulas, give me one second here.
I knew you were a whistler.
There you go.
Yeah. I'm just gonna double check and make sure that this is all copacetic. I'll check that total in a minute. No, I had checked all these already, I just don't miss one. Okay, that's good, so that's fine. Gotta make sure these are good. Well, that's fine, I know that's fine, I know those are all in. I wanna make sure this total formula is encompassing, yep, it does. That's good. That's good. Just bear with me a minute, guys, I'm just making sure all the rest of the formulas are good. Hey Denise. Why do we have this in?
In what?
We have another mistake here.
She said fair things is twenty-seven dollars.
Sum of P ninety-three, so this number here should, is the serial bond, the principle on serial bond.
Yeah.
But for some reason, the serial bond is is asking for a sum of a different spot.
Oh, you said, you said fifty a thousand, I don't know, maybe fifty dollars.
Uh so this really should be this one.
Maybe it's fifty bucks a thousand.
Should be this.
That sounds better.
He said fifty a thousand.
So, I found another mistake, guys, uh this number was incorrectly grabbing the wrong thing, so I think there's another three thousand that we're gonna be different. Um. Alright, yeah, so we're back to being thirty-three thousand three hundred.
Dan.
Hello, Dan?
Evening.
Welcome, welcome.
Oh, I thought all these people out here were here for the budget meeting.
You betcha.
Thousands of cars, I thought they were here for the budget.
Yeah, there's some uh.
Little league in South.
Little league, uh budget.
So just as a quick refresher, sewer, we have added ten thousand dollars into contingency, because sewer is now in the positive after we've made uh. A, a, a change that I should have noted earlier. And um I fixed one formula down here, which means we are now thirty-three thousand three hundred in the positive. And that includes our ten thousand dollars contingency, do you have any?
I'm still getting that second one, I'm.
Alright. Alright, so uh with that in mind, uh any questions on sewer expenses in terms of page two? Um. I don't know why that formula is there. Uh Denise, you said that you had in sewer added the treasurer, which is this one.
Yeah.
Um fixing some.
I, I emailed you the latest before I left work.
This is the latest.
Okay.
I think, where did you make the changes?
In the twenty-four twenty-five.
Um in the salaries or in the, in the sewer line?
In the sewer.
Where, where is the newest one? I'm not seeing the change.
Oh, hold on, I can look at my emails.
I'll look at it fast, well, I downloaded that file, that's what this one is, I just renamed it for this meeting, unless I.
Because I checked it when I sent, after I sent it to you. I thought I did.
Give me one minute.
We're looking at scent.
I got it right here. Sewer. Treasure, that's the one. I don't know why that's not in this one.
Not only me then, thank God.
No, I think that was me.
Well, that's not twenty-three, twenty-four, that's twenty-four, twenty-five.
Right. Oh, that's cause I'm zooming in too far, oh, that's because I unhid things, I'm sorry. It was there, give me one minute, I forgot I hid these columns so we could see everything. Love you Excel. Right, in the banking world, do they use Excel?
Uh depends what, then can we work for it?
Do they have support groups for it? Alright, so there it is, it is in there, this is the uh additional uh treasure position salary distribution. Any questions on any salary stuff here for in sewer lines?
Three years behind the news.
I'm gonna keep scrolling down just to go through this.
Just out of curiosity, Rob, do some of the lines just kinda get deleted at some point with the coronavirus PR, is that, I mean, does it just kind of go away?
Yeah. What happens is, um and I don't know if I did it this time, but once we get past.
Oh, the four years.
Once we get past a bunch of years where it's, it's not in there, then I'll just get rid of that, let me just. If um, yeah, so this still in here historically, since I, 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 I switched this to kind of showing the last several. Um. Once that's out, would, like this one here, we, I don't know why this one is uh, this number is this way, but. That would be one that we haven't used in a long time, so maybe we could take it right out if we wanted to. Uh it's not a big deal that it's there, it's just kind of a more of a convenience thing, a little bit less, excuse me, yeah, no, that's fine.
Nah, you're just curious.
Alright, um. Any other questions on these particular items?
Uh he says fifty dollars per thousand gallons, not fifty cents, just so you know.
Well, you're saying raise, you said raise it a nickel.
Yeah, but we thought it was really low.
What is the rate?
Fifty.
No, it is fifty cents.
Kenny said fifty.
It's fifty dollars per.
No, it's fifty cents, it's the same thing, it's, 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 it's fifty.
Right, 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 it's fifty cents per gallon, yeah, yeah, gotcha, yeah, yeah.
Huh, per gallon, same thing.
Oh, okay.
We're talking about the gallon rate, that's not, we're talking, not the, not the thousand.
Okay, so if they're dropping off a thousand gallons, they're paying fifty dollars, so if they drop off a thousand gallons, everything fifty-five dollars.
Yeah.
Right.
I thought it was fifty cents per thousand, and I was like, that's way too high.
Okay. And going back to the report from it, the total gallons each month is around a hundred and fifty, hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred thousand, two fifty. So it's not a lot of, of change there.
Not, well, not, not really, but dumb, like, but dumb, like, hundred gallons.
In the water, the water sale goes, while we get to that, but I mean, the water sale actually goes up in the summer months too, right?
Yes.
Into spring and uh.
Yes, that's on the water income line, which we just started keeping track of about a year or two ago in our reports.
Right.
Where did we ever end up on meter, remember we were talking about?
Ch- possibly changing meter?
Was there a way to meter that or something or?
Oh, um, we would have to purchase um a meter currently, right now, I think. There's either, it's either built on the, a trust system, or we have a meter that they hook up each time.
No, we have a meter, they hook up each time.
Oh, we do have, okay.
I checked, yes. We have a meter, they hook up to the hydra.
Oh, I was just.
Yes, I, I, I checked on that after we, last time, we talked about that one time.
We switched that a couple of years back.
You do?
That's what Kenny said.
I've been relying on that guy calling me with his gallons.
Oh, I thought Kenny said that he had a meter right on it.
To my knowledge, there's not.
On this one?
I'm talking about this one.
Where they fill up, yeah.
The tanker trucks or whatever.
Yeah, the, the pool guy, whatever, the water guy.
I don't, I think there's a portable meter was being discussed, I don't know if we have one. Do you wanna reach out to Jim and shoot him a text and see if we do have a, a meter or not for that, I feel like.
Oh, I was just curious, I know we talked about.
No, that's alright. I think it's.
That's the hydra they use.
No, I know, but the, the meter would be something they'd hook up, right?
Yeah, it was on there, it was like this system they had, it was supportive, it opened the air.
Don't hurt yourself.
I'm, I'm old.
Jeez.
Cause when the fire department comes down, they gotta like shut the hydra off, take the meter off.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, you can go check as well.
No, I'm just using this as a bet.
That's alright.
It's like a big tiger tail, a little water up.
I forgot, we've got our April voices in here, but we haven't proved that out yet.
Alright, hey, this, uh these highlighted lines, I don't think they need to be highlighted, I think that was just old.
No. Yeah, yep.
Alright. And these items here are the debt that we have for the sewer back truck and for the UV filtration. Upgrade, which is coming, and that's debt that we budget for each year so that we don't have to bond that out to people. Smaller, smaller um debt things, and that, that ties into that debt spreadsheet that I show from time to time. What's the word? No meter.
No, there's a setup in a hook, in a hook, a quick disconnect, but there's no meter.
Okay, no meter. I thought that they would, it'd have to be a portable meter, I don't think there's a meter right there.
It's like a quick.
I feel like it's a pretty significant expense, I feel like it was like in the multiple thousands of dollars to get that meter. Um and I don't think the water rate, the.
Well, we justify it, right.
Yeah, it'd be like a long-term investment. Alright, so right now. Why is this number different? Oh, God, I was looking at the wrong column the last time. I'm sorry, back when I had unhidden the columns, we were referencing this number. This is where we're at right now, oh jeez, that means I put the, the contingency wrong too. Hold on one second, taking out the contingency, cause I put it in the wrong columns, I couldn't see the headers. So tentative budget overall for twenty-four, twenty-five. My apologies, I took out the ten thousand, so put it in the wrong, right now, with our uh income adjusted, and we're still looking uh for one more item there. Um we are five thousand three hundred and eleven uh in the hole if we spend everything, so we would be committing five thousand three hundred and eleven of fine balance.
If we.
But we, we think that we're, we're low on our anticipated sewer uh.
Sewer revenue.
Metered sewer revenue, because this number is significantly lower than the past uh couple of years.
You gotta change that, I don't know.
You gotta change the one twenty over as well, cause you only have a hundred there.
Oh, you're right, ah, thank you.
Well, how often do we ever spend everything for that in the budget?
Which should then put us fifteen.
It should put us back in the, in the good side.
Then the positive.
Thank you, good catch. Um, do you have your sewer budget sheet handy for just a moment? Can I just look it up for a quick moment? Okay, so this was projected out, I'm gonna put this back to the way it was. Uh but it won't be that number, it will be ninety-seven, seven, seven, eight dot two five. Um, okay, thank you, I fixed that, my mistake, thank you, so now I have corrected this one properly, and to scroll down. Um, we're now fourteen, six in the plus, thank you. Just gonna put that back out of the way.
There we go. Alright, let's go home.
Alright.
I can sleep tonight.
Rob, how often do we use like everything?
Oh.
Like every goal or not very often or? More often than not.
In the past few years, historically, it's been so weird. Um I would say that. And Denise, feel free to correct me on this, I would say that we typically don't spend everything that we budget for, but it's the unexpected things that. but it's the unexpected things that come up that end up being the bigger expenses.
Pumps and stuff, yeah.
Yeah. Which is why it may be worth um taking whatever is in the positive and throwing that in contingency and just having a straight out zero, zero out budget. Or we could just throw, say, ten thousand in contingency and look to be in the plus after the fact, doesn't matter either way, doesn't matter either way.
It's just a budget transfer away, right?
Right, the nice thing about contingencies, if there's an emergency, we have the contingency there, it's a lot less steps we have to to use that, yeah, yeah.
Right, do, right.
I think that would be safer than
Alright.
projecting high on.
So we'll wait to see what Denise's final numbers are on sewer, um.
Pretty much.
This is the one number we have a question about, this guy right here, I'm gonna highlight it with a slightly different color, Doug, does that look different to you?
Yes, Tom.
Yes, awesome, okay. That's the one that we need to revisit.
Just can't read the numbers.
Oh, sorry about that. How's that, better or worse?
Looks blank, looks blank to you, right, looks dark.
Can you make them some numbers red?
Yeah.
Just make them bold. It's red and green, the two colors, you can't see.
Whoa.
Sorry, Rob.
Yeah, that wasn't the best choice.
It's fine.
The same number as projected, right?
There you go, no, it didn't work.
I was like, you could do white.
White, there you go.
It's terrible for us.
Alright.
It's it's the same number as projected, right?
Uh, it is right now, yes, yeah, but I think it, I think it should be higher, so we'll come back to this, we're gonna jump to water real fast.
Yes, yeah. I have your numbers here inside, so I can see them.
Oh, hold on, do you want like a slow drum roll?
Oh, no, you go ahead, I said, I'm in a second.
Okay, um.
Sounds like a slow drum roll.
Water. Um, right now, just to just to do quick overview before we get into the weeds, seven hundred fifty, eight eighty-nine is our anticipated income. Eight thirty-nine is our anticipated expense, which means we're gonna be spending eighty-eight thousand four hundred seventy-six. Um, but d- does this reflect whatever we had to change for the 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 debt thing, this does, right?
Yes, yes.
Alright, so we can scroll through and talk in further detail about why that is. I'm gonna go back to that report for a minute and see what our water income was last year. So this is interesting, um. Our water last year, actually this fiscal year, this shows about eight, almost eight thousand dollars worth. And if you go off of last year, we're probably gonna get another four, so that it looks like we could probably project in this particular spot, um maybe ten or twelve thousands.
Ain't no man who's love.
Yeah, that I mean, that's seas- it's it's always season and weather wise and when they're filling up pools and things of that nature, um.
Pools.
Some more people need to buy pools.
Yes, exactly.
It's hard to.
I'm just finding.
It gets hotter, people shower.
Yeah, the entry error, so I'm fixing myself down.
This number here, from Jim's report.
I knew this should shower.
Okay.
Uh, this is the additional water that's sold that gets reported to you, where does that show up in the budget?
It's a damn moribund, wow, that's what.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's this one right here, so this number is not, is not right, because in the report,
Yep.
we have a July number and August number, which is higher, but those may have come in half a times. Or maybe you know the paper before, I don't know, but somehow this, what numbers are happening in our reports each month are different than what is in the budget number.
And what does that tie into, thirty-one ninety-three would be the first two?
I I don't even know where that number comes from as compared to this.
Let me see, thirty-one ninety-three.
It's very close to June.
Thirty-one forty-six.
So in reality, that other number should be.
I didn't get these numbers from Jim or Josh, that I know of, the guy, the water guy usually calls them his measurings. And I don't know.
But the numbers we get in the reports come through you.
Not here.
That's Jim's report.
Yeah, that's not mine, yeah.
This one? I thought I've been confirming these with you.
You asked me the last time, and.
Yeah, these are old, these are all twenty twenty-three numbers.
Yeah, at that point, we were good, so.
So these numbers we should think is good, but in twenty twenty-four, we haven't gotten anything yet, in the calendar year twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, we should have got, that should be.
Yes, we should have July and August, but what we have for July and August income is not reflected in
right?
Here, for some reason.
Yeah, I'll look at that too.
Alright.
See what I got.
I'm gonna put this as a question right here.
Right, cause it's almost eight thousand in it, right?
Yeah, I think, I think what we should be able to put right here in this number, which is the eight month, is the combination of these two items.
Seventy-eight, seventy-nine.
Seventy-eight, seventy-nine, fifty. Um, and if we wanted to anticipate what, well, let's see, this is in a fair comparison, cause this is over two different fiscal years, but I mean, it still looks like we could probably anticipate twelve to fifteen there. Seventy-eight, seventy-nine, I'm just gonna mark that inside here.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, 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 okay, that's a little bit.
Nope, right here. That's just a note. That is fun. Denise is um logged into her machine, her terminal in the office through the laptop, and if you've ever done that, it takes whatever's on the screen and shrinks it. And uh she has an enormous screen to begin with at the office, so it is um, it's fantastic to look at. Anyway, I'll let you go with that, um I think that this number is low, uh I don't think there's much else we can change for water. Um although, we only budgeted twenty thousand for water meter fines, but we were down the previous year. Um have we had any water meter fines, no one we're getting fines, who got water meters installed?
Yeah, we've had a lot of meters installed.
So this twenty thousand actually makes sense to be lower?
Yeah.
Okay.
How much is the fine if you don't have a meter?
Well, depending on what notice it is, it can be anywhere from a hundred to three, three fifty, we have a couple at that rate, or I believe we still have two to three people that don't have a meter at all, and that's fifteen hundred every four months.
So.
Can they just keep paying it?
Yes.
Because they don't pay, it just gets.
So, actually, this is a good, this is a good question, because our water law allows us to increase that um way more than we have been, and there's only a few people in the village who are not on a meter, so we could actually increase that fine, we've historically been doing it two hundred and fifty whenever we revisited it. I can't remember if we did like the resolution or through budget or whatever, if we wanted to increase that water meter, no water meter fine.
No. It's in the local law, and actually, I think the last time you and I revisited that was maybe two years ago.
Yeah.
We, you have the ability to keep upping that, which at that point.
I don't, I don't remember if it's through motion or through resolution, or we just set it and that's it.
Well, allows you, um in that law.
Yeah.
I think to increase it a certain amount, like every quarter, that it's, they haven't got one installed, it could.
I feel like it's like monthly, we could do it.
But it would, it would be huge, yeah, it might even be.
But we've only been doing it like once every bill cycle or once every fiscal year.
If that, yeah.
So that's another possibility that we could do.
At this point, that big fine is minimal, because.
It's only a couple people at this point.
Luckily, like a lot of people have put them.
But it's counter.
Yeah. So we get, we don't have to really think about that tonight, but that's something we can revisit, cause there's only a few people at this point. Back when I started, I wanna feel like there was a good like dozen or more.
Otherwise, yeah.
Who uh who didn't do it, and it wasn't until we started to increase that by like two hundred and fifty dollars at a time, they're like, holy crap.
And and how do we, how many do we have right now that are?
No meters?
Three taps maybe.
Yeah, that's, so that that has solved the problem.
Oh, okay.
Is that including the one we know that uh?
No.
No, no.
No.
Which reminds me, I need to send another letter, thank you.
We already sent one, right?
We did, certified and everything.
Oh, and he talked to me about it.
Oh, good.
But nothing's been, nothing's been done, I mean, you can, you can talk, I'm not the water guy.
Nothing's been planned, yeah, okay.
He needs to talk to Jim and.
Alright.
Denise, the rest of them are meters that have failed and they haven't gotten them repaired.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So in terms of.
We did have a good response though, between the last billing and this billing, um there were a lot of new endpoints installed.
What was one today, Josh, did Josh call, right, and one, um, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. It was hell, can you, oh, Gary Littlehouse, yeah.
Sixty-six, yes, sixty-six center.
In terms of uh water stuff, a lot of it is just like, it just kind of is what it is, there's very little we can play with. Um it really comes down to what their requests are for things like equipment, um. But they really try to just stick to what they need as best as we can.
In that fifteen cent rate of water, it got us how much revenue?
Why is that so high? Why is IT plant and pump so high? That's just computer network stuff, that shouldn't be four thousand. Alright, this is another one I gotta double check, that doesn't make any sense, so this is um Saratoga networking, which has come to do
That's a lot of money.
There are basically our computer peoples, but subject to water, um they also handle the two or three, with the the two um tanks, water tanks, which communicate with the equipment over at the water treatment plants. That doesn't make sense to me why we have that so high, there were a couple of different things they had to come out and address.
If you wanna bear with me, I'm trying to figure this out, we can, we can uh look at that, what's under there.
No, no, you're fine, you're fine, you're fine. I marked that as just a thing, cause that's, that seems ridiculously high.
We budgeted, we budgeted forty for it, right?
No, we budgeted six for it, for some reason, there's thirty-eight in there, I have no idea why.
Upset, so.
That's, Rob, that's not the pumps that, the big green pump that was just.
That's what I'm wondering.
Because that was.
Oh.
The one we just said, that was like sixteen, wasn't that like sixteen grand or something?
Well.
Nineteen, and another one for sixty.
Okay.
Yeah, there were two, both of them got done.
But that shouldn't be under IT plant and pump, Saratoga networking.
The two pumps that, and that one piece that.
I think that would be under.
Yeah, yeah.
Problem.
Yeah.
I think that should be under equipment, but we'll we'll double check that.
Yeah, that's.
That would make more sense, cause the two pumps.
Right.
And um it wouldn't be reflected here, but we used ARPA funds for
That last one.
Last one.
No, I have.
Alright, well, we'll circle back on that in a minute.
Oh, hmm.
So I'm trying to look at, so the ones. Where are we, the one seventy-five, one seventy-six, so for the two billings, pretty much August.
Where's, are we talking to?
When we, well, I'm just talking about the sewer rents, cause I I have more time to see them, so the one seventy-five would comprise your August reading.
Sure, jumping back to sewer, yep, yep, yep.
When we do the August reading, that covers April, May, June, July, we read at the end of July, so two months of that revenue
Mm-hmm.
gets reclassified back to the year before.
So that reading, we only get a third of it in this particular fiscal year, which is.
Half of it, yes.
Half of, okay.
And then the same thing happens in April, we add on.
We get a part.
We, you know, we do a reading June first, and then calculate it as if we were billing, but we're not.
Mm-hmm.
And that's an unbilled receivable, and generally, that amount in sewer is about seventy-two thousand, so I don't know. I'm having a hard time seeing, what, can you use that formula again?
Sure, this one right here.
What about the projected?
One thirty-one, five forty plus one thirty-one, five forty divided by two, which is just one thirty-one, five forty, uh plus L four.
Yeah. Yeah. So what I'm showing is the August was actually the one eighteen, eight forty-three, and then the seventy-two thousand was reversed out to the year before, and I'm trying to see what the
Mm-hmm.
December amount is.
One eighteen, eight forty-three.
Would have been.
So if we went absolutely archaic.
Was actually forty-six thousand gets booked for the August revenue, because we have to write out the seventy-two thousand to the year before. But then that reverses itself come April, May of the current year, right?
Okay. Anybody else's brain just explode right there?
Did you have that?
Wow.
I know what she's saying, but it's in 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 insane to follow, because you have to take a portion of one, and then you have to take the other one, and then you have to.
It's, it's really the same thing.
So let's just, let's just say here, wh- what's one, uh one of the three billings, what is that number?
That's what, the the December one is what I'd really like to use, because there's no journal entries affecting that one at all.
Okay.
So if I can get this to export, so I can see it, that'd be good. Since April one twenty-three.
If we wanted to go as archaic as humanly possible, we could just take one reading, which we know is a third of the year, and multiply that by three, no, that, no, that's not gonna make any sense. Good, I'm not doing that.
Budget to actual, so that'd be better.
Yeah, that's actually probably more like a a four one three or something like that.
So a quicker explanation, if you might, you guys wanna discuss what's in water while I'm still doing that.
Sure.
What line was it that we were looking at?
In water?
You have the the IT.
Uh, let's check out that one, um it's um eighty-three, twenty point five four.
Right, oh, yeah.
I'm not good folks to shut down, I mean.
Perfect.
Okay, go back to the drawing board. Is that someone picking up water, that'd be trouble.
Fire department.
Is it?
Hmm, water?
I thought it was like the, like.
Yeah, they're trying to drill or something.
Not, and I'm like, that can't be it.
Are they getting water, fire department?
Monday night, drill night, so.
There's no way they filled up that quick.
No.
No, they just turned around like.
That's the Phil, where you go to the vehicle and you say, Phil, and then you get back in the vehicle and drive away.
Okay, start to make up.
Alright.
Because you gotta just find the signal and probably come.
We do, absolutely, hey, this is what it takes, what it takes.
Not the fastest, I'll tell you that.
Red, this.
That looks really low.
And what's the difference between that?
Denise will be able to answer those things if you're, what what was the thing you're asking about?
It says, um.
What, pump stations, maintenance and equipment.
Eight three four zero, uh point four two.
So this line of items, transmission, distribution of water, is generally separate from this line, and generally speaking, this is specific to the water plants, and these are specific to the um pump stations. Generally speaking.
Can you get over here for a minute?
Mm-hmm.
Water. Water.
I'm gonna walk around for a minute, yup.
Two three twenty forty-five.
So like eight three four zero point four six, and we're just see pumps often fail, failure, that's specific to that part of the one, okay.
Yes. Fortunately, those are, those pumps all did well this year, knock on wood. Lots of knocking.
The thirty-eight, whatever it is.
Uh, no, it's not this one, it's um.
Eight three twenty fifty-four, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got, yeah, that pump, the nineteen thousand two sixty-four fifty is in there.
So that shouldn't be in this line, cause that's Saratoga networking.
Okay, so I guess because it was a pump, you put it in there?
Okay.
That's the one that's out in back of the water plant, to deal with the overflow, so, right, okay.
Yeah. More specifically, that should probably go in just straight up in equipments, but we haven't been using that line as normal, um. What else is in that line?
So we've got Saratoga Networks, uh updated windows, Saratoga Networks. Uh nothing, scratch.
Can you relax that overview?
Yep. And then the nineteen thousand, what's the eleven?
The eleven thousand, seaworthy.
That's a Gould model, ESHC two, twenty horsepower pump, water treatment plant, state A.
That is the other pump, that is the one that comes out of the skin that heads to the dam, so that's the other pump. Cause it has two.
So you got those two in there, it's probably eleven.
Can you, yeah, add those up for me?
Two seventeen, uh and nineteen two sixty-four twenty.
Yup.
Can you give me those two numbers again?
Eleven thousand two seventeen.
Eleven thousand two seventeen, shoot, hold on a minute. Alright, and then what else?
And nineteen thousand?
Yep.
Two sixty-four fifty.
So what it is, I took the original number and took out the two.
Yep.
So you get twenty, you get stiff or?
Last year, um.
So that network is now. So that network is now, is about seven nine four four fifty?
Yeah.
I went to the hotel room, probably like an hour after I like. Yeah, could they have some small stuff going on in there?
Projected, but.
Part of next little slide.
I'm gonna change the projected to ten five six six dot nineteen.
Took like an hour to. Hung around there.
Ten.
Five six six dot nineteen.
Why didn't say?
Okay.
And then we went back to.
Now, we need to find a spot to plug in those other two.
I took like an hour nap.
How bad is it gonna be?
Jump back up, I was still like.
I think we throw in the eighty three, twenty point two equipment line.
It wasn't, it wasn't too bad, um it wasn't like they couldn't.
Does that work?
Sure.
Can I have those two numbers?
Yup, eleven thousand two seventeen.
Yup.
Nineteen thousand two sixty four fifty.
That was longer. A lot more stuff than I anticipated.
Yeah, trample.
Okay. So, uh no. We spent ARPA funds, we used ARPA funds for one of those or? And to be issued that in the income above.
This year. This year it sold out, um I think they.
The ARPA?
Cuz we purchased one or both of those with ARPA funds.
In person, you have a bet sheet.
I have that.
Do you have what you emailed me?
And it's great, it's great though, it's a whole.
Yes.
Yeah, actually, you allocated something.
There's another stretch where.
It's sorry, yeah, yeah.
It was, the actual cost was nineteen, I think it was sixteen or something. So it's.
Water, can I hear this?
Sixteen nine oh three was actually nineteen. Fifteen twenty five, I don't think we did that though.
Oh no.
That's one we haven't gotten yet, what you're saying.
So we had fifty K for the panel, but it was only seventeen, so we used other funds.
Right, we didn't set anything aside for that other, the one we have, the fifteen five ninety five is the one they don't have. Talking about my.
Okay.
They just did, I should say, yeah.
Okay.
Think games.
So then those other expenses.
I could've been there.
To be allocated, allocated.
But that was, I was like, I wouldn't have wanted to.
In, I mean, it doesn't really change our projectable for next year, cuz it's gonna be used for.
Right, right.
Well, I, I was.
You know, I will do a second, I think I have a lot of children, but that's what I was doing today.
So guys, just to update you on uh us getting into the weeds over here, um this Saratoga um this Saratoga pump number was wrong, um we had two emergency pump fixes in there and they just got punched into that uh account number by accident. So what I did is I took uh the original number which we had, which was all Saratoga stuff. And I took out those expenses and that's how we ended up with this number, which projects out this number to be ten five six six dot nineteen. Which means we do not need to be thinking we're gonna spend thirty nine thousand five hundred seventy eight um for for IT at the water plants.
Right.
Um so I think it's pretty.
So the IT is the technological aspect of it or what?
The IT is involves um firewall um subscriptions, times that they come out to do various repairs, um.
Yeah. Okay.
So, yeah, so we could, now, again, we've, the previous two years, we only spent this much money there, we spent this much so far this year, we don't think we have any more needs, knock on wood.
Programming and stuff like that.
Um it wouldn't hurt, this is just a uh the standard like multiplying it out by a third to cover the four months is an anticipated thing, but we don't necessarily need to go by that. I think it would be fine to change the number to like an eight thousand um or nine thousand if you wanted to factor in high as a more realistic thing.
Yeah, maybe nine thousand.
Yeah.
Nope, ninety.
No, not now, no.
Wow, we are employing someone fully, okay, and what we did is to reflect the equi- the the sudden equipment purchases, we put it up in the equipment line. We threw it into this column, which is the eight months, and we put both of the numbers there. Um we're not anticipating buying new pumps, that was an emergency thing. The one thing Denise is gonna check on with her journal entries is to see if we properly allocated the ARPA um income up here, which I don't think we did, so we'll have to go back and and add that in, but that number of ARPA funds, that's just to to reflect what we did, it's, we're not gonna budget for spending more ARPA funds this coming year.
Jim said we do have a meter for the water fill up.
Okay.
It's a portable one or whatever.
It's a portable one, they grab it, okay.
Also.
Follow up on that.
Should we project for equipment maintenance, knowing that there is a piece that if that breaks and was not re- we have to replace that whole pump that just got like.
Right.
That is the pump that we have already allocated using ARPA funds and it's coming in, so that's already covered, we've already done that allocation.
Oh, oh. Okay.
Um and then not to bring it up again to be redundant, but the man which is.
Um.
Yeah.
Yes, uh which is near death.
And. Yes, the name is decided.
So that's one of our kind of bigger expenses that we know we need. Um so just to come back to that, with this change, we now see ourselves in the hole by only fifty seven thousand eight hundred ninety eights. Um if we spend everything. Uh again, we do know that we have um some PFOA stuff that's still lingering, that hopefully will get taken up in this calendar year, but it's not something that I I I feel comfortable anticipating enough to the point where it happens in the budget, but if something does come in and the board has decisions on how to spend said money, we'll revisit that and make some budget modifications.
Denise, how many years do we have left on the bonds, I'm curious.
I got that.
Thirtyish.
Wait, it's a, it's a time, Dave.
I think twenty seven, thirty, twenty seven years.
So here's. Let me zoom in a bit.
Um, I mean, don't, it's 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 a long time.
Yeah.
So these are the three main bonds. The rest of these debt items below here are items that we have and they have this long to go, but we have budgeted them on a regular basis, so we don't bond those out, so the three bonds
Or.
are these three right here. This is the two thousand five wastewater plant, which if I I recall correctly, that was the consent order that happened within thirty days of Laura Reynolds being mayor for the first time in Don McGarrett's being gone in D C's like wham, go make a new water wastewater treatment plant. Water plant um uh is another one, that would, uh this was the expense, this is what the payment is per year, divided amongst the three pays, that's what we do. And this is the newest one that had just started last year showing up. Um although I, we have to update some of the the estimate year, but um this was when the sewer bond went up, that's what, when it went up thirty one dollars and sixty seven cents each of the three. So again, necessary important things.
So correct, so the maturity date is twenty, so they're, oh, so if that's the case.
Right here.
You know, there's thirteen more years on on the first one.
That that one, that one just started.
Yes. No, no, the very first one, the the two thousand five wastewater.
Oh, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Thirteen years, yeah, I haven't, I haven't had a moment to put all this out there.
Yeah.
I, I give them that, I was just.
I guess, I guess time flies, not thirty, but.
It's a good question.
No, no, well.
Oh, it's a great question.
It's still like, seems like eternity now.
We answer it all the time, I can't believe I didn't uh.
Yeah.
People wanna know that, and I don't blame them.
Oh, absolutely. The nice thing is that we've had to take on some stuff recently, we've been able to budget for those and not stick it to more um bond payments. And you know, this is. It's it's really, you know, some of this was, we didn't expect a twenty seventeen flood, that was my second month as mayor.
And we got screwed by that because we got no money for FEMA.
We got screwed with the highway garage.
Yeah.
Uh yes, um we had no money for FEMA from that, we got um, this went two hundred eighty thousand over budget, probably all that space right there. Uh landfill each eight was part of the fact that we are a responsible party with um Honeywell, not Saint Cobain. Because of PFOA at the landfill, and just as a reminder for that one, the landfill was closed before Saint Cobain or its predecessor, wherever in the village, which is why we're dealing directly with Honeywell and not Saint Cobain. Um so yeah, those are those, I know we're off off to the other side there, but. Um so hopping back to the budget, I don't know if there's much more we can change in the water. Um. Fund balance in water, how are we doing? Fund balance in water.
Ah, we are.
Look, if we're looking, if we spend everything and we're gonna be fifty seven eight in the hole.
We're projecting a right, fifty one thousand four seventy six, twenty three twenty four, that would bring us to one fifty six, one thirty two.
It's low, not super comfortable, but also not uh, not all of our pants are on fire, we're running around, yeah. The new threshold, our pants are not on fire, yeah, thumbs up. And again, if you look back and I'm gonna um remind me to rehide these, but I'm gonna um you can see different years depending on what happens, um we've been in the hole or in surplus or holy crap or in surplus.
Ooh, two hundred forty nine thousand, that's got worse.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, here was that, Rob.
Which one?
Two hundred forty nine dollars.
Uh this is nineteen twenty, this is twenty twenty one.
Nineteen twenty twenty two.
It was twenty one twenty.
Twenty one twenty two.
I will say that some of the um income that we get from various settlements, like this one came in in this fiscal year, but it applied to two fiscal years, so there's weirdness in all of that stuff.
Right, cuz they back pay us.
Um. Or, yeah, they pay after, sometimes, that one, they paid in anticipation of lost revenue over two years, but other ones were paid after the fact, so it's always been a, just a roller coaster of insanity.
I've been meaning to to email Dave to ask him if he thinks there's gonna be anything in place that we could put in there, but do you know if they're close to it or not, he just recently asked me for an updated PFOA, like a month and a half ago.
Yes. Yes, I I've been talking to him about that, and that's one of our our goals to anticipate costs and get that to him very soon, but he knows that that is priority right now.
Did you ever talk to Matt?
Well, I'm not even talking, are you talking about the wealth, the wealth portion or just our expenses?
Oh yeah, he says it's fine, um Kenny's just gonna give the ball to him, so we know.
Probably not.
Okay, so we.
But there's, there's nothing, there's nothing we can add, it is. I.
And maybe down the road, hopefully some people come in to upset twenty four, twenty five expenses.
Yes, yes. Yes, that is, and that could be in twenty four, twenty five fiscal year, but there's a lot of things we have to have.
That's the way it's been happening, but yeah.
Oh, Jesus.
Yes.
And we can look back to the sewer rents, and I don't know, you know, these amounts come up to uh.
Sewer rents. We've got, but we got, it wasn't the one thirty one divided by two, so.
We got.
Yeah.
Big, big.
So the August.
Six.
It's the August rep shot, honestly.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So the August revenue was really a hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred about.
And. With the same.
Say that one more time?
And we don't get into the sense, so one eighteen, eight forty three.
I'm just gonna throw it up here.
We had to back out the April, May twenty three portion. We just make, you know, April, May, um.
Okay.
April, May twenty three.
He's a big one too.
Seventy two, seven oh six.
They got him on camera.
It's up on Clay Hill.
So that's gonna be the net for the August revenue.
He's been um very cool.
Yep, December.
Is that me?
December revenue.
So this will be the, this is specific to.
August twenty three.
The forty six, three?
Yes.
That's July, August twenty three, right?
Yeah, for the August, yeah.
Which is in the fiscal year, and that's what we need, okay, December.
Basically.
December, December. Um, one twenty. Right, I go right to December. Are you kidding me?
I wanna know what you guys are talking about later.
So take, what's the one seventy five, one seventy six, take away that, cuz I gotta figure out which one is the one I.
One seventy six, one, one seventy five?
One seventy five, one seventy six, take away the forty six.
Minus. Alright, alright, one second.
Cuz it sells, it's not going in that large portion for four. We'll take away your forty six.
I did.
One twenty nine, yeah, one twenty nine, three fifty four is what I had.
So what is what, what does that number reflect about?
That's the December billing revenue, one twenty nine, three fifty four.
Yeah.
Okay. So that is the.
One twenty nine, three fifty four, September through December.
September through December. Twenty three, right?
That's, oh, yeah, yeah.
Starts at um eight one to November thirty.
God, what is the one that goes over?
Which is the December one.
Alright, we'll just call it.
But, so it's one twenty nine, three fifty four.
We'll call it September and November.
You don't even need to use that formula, but I know.
What's that?
So two forty six and the one twenty nine was our, we had the forty six and the one twenty nine.
Okay.
And then we divided it by the two.
But we should, we should have. So this is really six months.
D C's answer was.
Right.
So really, we should double that and that would be. Okay, we figured out, we figured out our mistake, well, we figured out specifically with the water, um.
Not really a mistake, but how we.
Yeah, how we arrived at it, okay, so the August bill is one eighteen, eight forty three, this is August uh twenty three bill cycle. Um however, April and May of twenty twenty three doesn't count to the fiscal year, so this comes out, which means the July and remaining August stuff is this much money. The December bill, which covers these four months, was this revenue, so these two represent six months of our full year of one seventy five, one seventy six.
And I, I can give you an amount for the April, what we just bailed out. We reconcile that amount between QuickBooks, which we have not had a chance to do so.
Okay.
But, as long as you know that. Cuz we always tie it in. Make sure that we're accurate. So April to May, I've got one eleven oh ninety.
Um April, say that again?
One hundred eleven thousand ninety dollars.
One eleven ninety, what is that?
One, one one, that's a lot, one hundred eleven thousand ninety dollars. But we then need to add in, we will take a reading June first of twenty four.
Mm-hmm.
So April, May generally is around the sixty nine to seventy two thousand, so you'd need to add that revenue in on top of that. It's April, May. I mean, last, last year was seventy two thousand, and we have another good year.
So we could estimate, we could either double this, which is approximately six months, or we could add the, this one. Um I'll take out this one completely, well, I don't need this one, um but I'll take this one and I will take this is what we're estimating for.
April billing.
January to June. Or January to May, yeah.
Come on, one hundred thirty eight comments.
Uh man, I gotta go back on, it was only eighty nine yesterday. That's too bad, I gotta read.
Yeah, going down a dead entry.
It's, it's one day a week.
Somebody was complaining about it.
Somebody.
No, and somebody posted something on Facebook.
So that's, that's like three head.
A little bit of force.
So it could be wrong, but for some reason.
It always comes a little bit.
I didn't even find a balance, being Matt Law.
Wow, we yelled that, wow, that law.
Yup. Okay, alright.
You might try to chat it in the middle, three oh six, and you got three fifty, make it three twenty.
I, I will revisit the ice cream truck conversation.
I'm like, what are you running for, and they all started, I heard.
Alright, couple things, um, a pretty.
My social, my favorite social studies teacher in high school, oh, my favorite teacher in high school, used to do that in the summer.
Ice cream truck derails everything. Alright, uh a pretty solid number is this one seventy five, one twenty six, which is July to somewhere, some part of December with the billing. So if we just straight up doubled that, we could say that an anticipated number that we could have is a hu- is three hundred and fifty. Um Denise ran some additional numbers to be tried to, to be a little bit closer, it estimates out higher for the second half of the fiscal year. We could also say this number, the problem is two things, it never actually gets this high, and that may just be because one of the readings is lower. It may be that the April reading ends up coming lower because there's less water usage or whatever. Um and because we know our fund balance is off, it's it's a little bit risky putting in these high numbers, so I think we could make an argument between a three hundred forty and three hundred fifty is our anticipated
Yeah.
number, going back to, this was sewer, right, or is this water, this is sewer.
It's sewer.
Yeah, three forty be conservative.
So we could actually say uh three forty is probably a better anticipated number.
Yeah.
And we got more zaps.
Let's keep an eye on it.
Oops, I did that wrong, should be here, boom, boom. Drop out that comment, that now puts our income line at. That's, that's not it, one that I missed it. Uh expenses, there we go, eight seventy nine, six oh nine for anticipated income. Eight seven nine six oh nine. And total expenses, eight thirty one, six thirty six, which means we're forty seven nine seventy two. And the end, the question you're going to ask is can we throw that money at water, the answer is always a hard no, you're not allowed to. At the tables. I hate it, but.
You're not allowed to do that.
We're not allowed to take sewer money and throw it at the waterfronts, it's uh it you'd, you'd think like the, the, just looking at it going, well, yeah, that would make sense, cuz you got plus one in mine, the other, but.
I don't mix it with.
Not allowed to do it, not allowed to do it. And there's very little way that we as a village can kind of adjust and play with numbers, because a lot of, not play with in like a, a, a bad nefarious way. But the one thing that we have revisited a couple different times is the way we distribute salaries amongst general water and sewer. Um because there are certain years where we spend more time on water or more time on sewer, we can justify the different percentages, but.
Our fund balance is bad on that.
What's that?
Our fund balance with sewer is bad, so we do need to build it up.
It is the lowest, so.
And I truly remember, I think, where we came out with the the one sixty seven oh three, that was a formula error
Yeah, yeah.
that I believe, whatever happened when we were doing the spreadsheet, one of those, I was just saying to you, seventy two thousand, we. We, we, we added in, but it was added in twice, which.
Oh.
We had, we had slated to use about sixty thousand or fifty thousand that year.
Okay.
But that formula error drove it up to the one sixty.
So.
So.
So that number's still in there because that's what we had approved in the past, but it was a formula error.
Yeah.
Okay. So sewer, we're in the plus forty seven nine, uh, this does include contingency? Because we had extra money, where's contingency? No, we did not throw in any money in contingency for sewer.
No. We did that in the.
We could add contingency for sewer?
Yeah.
Yes.
How, ten thousand?
Ten thousand?
Um, I gotta make sure that formula is proper, did it change?
Um.
No.
Nope.
So we have the same problem this one, give me one minute. Cause we haven't used it, we haven't needed to have it in the formula. Contingency.
Right there.
Plus, boom, thank you. Alright, so thirty seven, nine, seven two in the plus, and we have um the contingency of ten thousand, which I forgot to mark with the uh highlighting effect. Alright, sewer's good, any questions on sewer?
Nope.
Water. Um. Water charges meter hydrant.
Skip out to get quick call.
Sure. Sure, sure, sure. Why don't we just pause for a couple minutes, walk around, get food, take a break?
Get food.
I brought food myself, I guess that's just me being selfish.
We should.
We should actually.
Yeah, I agree, alright, it's seven thirty five, I'm gonna pause the recording and then I'll resume it when we get back. Okay, it's uh seven forty three P M, we're getting, oof, getting food, we're getting back into uh the meeting, Doug's just working on Denise on a number. Um.
Oh, eight one sixty two.
So. Before. We kind of move into our next steps, the only thing left.
Hmm, I know, that's why I'm saying.
In my mind was adjusting this water income number.
Oh, I have to keep it.
To be more reflective of what we think we have been coming in with, have you looked into the water, metered hydrant? Uh, income from up here?
Nope.
Can you do that for me, so we can update that number?
You're talking about over here.
Yes, yes, so Denise is gonna check QuickBooks for what our water income has been.
That's thirty one ninety three.
Mm-hmm.
Were these amounts, June, July, August, September, October, November, January, July. That's, that's a wrong posting.
Are we missing someone else?
Do you think that helps with the other?
Well, hang on, oh, that was a pool bill.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, like how you.
That was President Michael Pitt. That's the last notification I got of anyone.
Oh. Look, where's the note?
Where is it?
You know what I mean?
That's what I'm looking for right now.
Cause they only have to.
Yeah.
Sure, sure, sir.
Yeah, so the whole truck looks to this, right? And then it opens up and goes through there, right?
Yeah. I hope, yeah, but where's the meter?
Okay.
Inside there, right?
Um.
That's not a meter, it's a.
Did it go this thing?
Oh no, I looked at, there's nothing.
These are not at all.
No, it's, it's, it's.
There's a cap you would go off that tells you?
Maybe there is.
I know.
Oh, maybe there is.
I was just saying, just showed it.
Yeah, maybe that's a.
Oh, no, I remember.
Remember at one meeting you asked me, and I told him.
You know, see here in this tab, like.
Yep, yeah. Yes.
And he gave me his balance, so.
You wouldn't.
They're not with that one.
No, no.
Which is probably the point.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, you want to know that, I love, the gaze looking up here, doesn't, I didn't need to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at total, hang on.
Yeah.
So June of twenty three was twelve eighty four.
Oh, you're right, I'm looking at the total as well, I'm looking at the wrong thing.
Yes, I was.
It certainly makes sense.
I'm sort of, yeah, we're more on, that makes me feel about it.
Sheepers.
And.
Uh.
Chaining down there.
Yeah, I'll change that.
Well, then, it's like, it sounds like it might be.
Okay. Gosh, again, just.
Probably not, it's over, but.
I did the same thing, so.
Okay, we figured it out, I was doing the wrong thing, we were both doing the wrong thing, so this water figure, this is the monthly revenue. This column right here, we were, we were adding together, oh, please, please, next time, it's fine.
I was talking about to you, but.
We were adding together up the running tally of the total revenue, which doesn't make sense to add up, this is what we should have been adding up.
Oh.
So we are, thus far, we have this much money, um, for this fiscal year, which is pretty close to what we'd anticipated.
In June, in June.
In June, okay, so it's actually.
Yeah. Sixteen fifty nine.
Yeah, so we could, we could, so going back to that number in the budget, you know, we did four thousand over a calendar year, not technically a fiscal year. Um, where am I going here?
So we are, we are legitimately at the thirty one ninety three through January.
Okay, so that's right, so we could up this to like, say, four thousand, to be more accurate, but it's, it's not a huge difference in our budget, but it is closer to what we've been doing. So do you guys just wanna throw in four thousand?
I think that's fine.
Fine? Um, if I, if I took the, the formula.
I need to promote more pools in the village.
Yeah, so if we, if we.
Give away free billings.
If we uh plot out the other few months, it actually comes closer to four thousand two hundred, so if we wanna up this a little bit more, we could. If we wanted to.
Is it be.
Yeah.
Yeah, it flips open, yeah.
So why don't you just go ahead?
That's why we were noticing.
Alright, I'm gonna just throw this at four thousand five hundred even. Or maybe forty two hundred? Let's see, forty two hundred.
Yeah, I was like.
Alright, so we up this to forty two hundred, which is pretty much in par with what we're estimating for the year. It's close to our, actually last, the year before was a little bit higher. Um, so it doesn't make a huge change, but that leaves us, um, total income anticipated, seven fifty one, eight ninety six. You changing that?
So, wait a minute, I got D thirty one in water. Talking revenue or?
Revenue.
Four oh five, eight seven.
That's now.
So we changed the, the meter rents, four oh five.
Yeah, seven three.
Eight seventy one or no?
Before any changes.
Two fifty, twenty nine.
Social.
Oh, I was looking at stuff, so I didn't update mine, so thirty two, one oh three.
Alright. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you change that?
Yeah. Seven forty, yeah, seventy one.
I have that, that's okay, thirty two, one oh three.
Yeah.
Probably only paste it by what, eight hundred dollars, sorry, it's thirty one ninety four, eleven, but uh.
Right on. Two eighty nine. What do you, the different numbers to me?
I do not know. And they're hard to type in, so I don't know why those are there.
Two eighty nine, five forty six is what I had, not that it's a big difference, but two eighty nine, four seventy two.
Well.
Okay, two eighty nine. Four seventy two.
What'd you call it, roughly?
Oh, cause I have the seventy seven thousand in there.
What's that?
You had seven fifty one is what it is.
I think so, do you want to see anything else?
Just below that, you took the seventy seven, huh?
Yes.
Okay, and that brings it to seven fifty one.
Eight ninety six. Uh, in terms of expenses. Uh, let's see here. It's going all the way down, nope, that's not all the way down. Eight oh eight, seven eighty seven, which is a difference of fifty six, eight ninety one, and this is the one where we have fund balance of one seventy or eighty, I think you said you have to be adding that?
One fifty six.
One fifty six.
Assuming twenty three, twenty four comes in as it's supposed to.
Yeah.
Um, what did you change in the expenses for water?
I think the only change, oh, we changed the big number that was wrong, um, this guy.
Yes.
Cause we fixed.
It was thirty nine something.
Thirteen, uh, eighty three, twenty point five four, it was up to forty thousand.
Yeah, like.
Yeah, but that just went to a different line, it didn't change anything.
Well, we changed the, we changed what we anticipated to spend this year, we changed. The, um.
Fifty four.
Well, cause you moved it up to a point.
Okay, seventy nine, forty four, fifty, ten, five, sixty six, I do have that, okay.
We had anticipated forty thousand. Okay, the only other thing was, uh, this guy right.
Thirty thousand.
That's about a quick man, okay.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we put these in here, but we're not anticipating other spends for Bigfoot purchases. Okay, um. So, right now, we are sitting on a budget and we have some other things to discuss as well, sort of bigger things we wanna see if we can build in. Uh, our water is fifty six, eight ninety one in the negative. Uh, our sewer is thirty seven, nine, seven two in the positive, including a ten thousand contingency. And our general is fifty six, three, four, seven in the negative, if all is spent, so we'd be contributing fund balance to that. Uh, now, we had wanted to move into executive session, um, to uh discuss personnel and, and bring Denise in with us, I'm assuming this is a good time to do that. So, uh, if that is the case, I'm looking for a motion to move into executive session, discuss personnel, Doug, Dan, um, uh, further discussion. And then there, we, we will resume the business meeting as normal, so this is not a, we're ending the meeting and, and not in business, we're gonna.
Okay, that was, that was my question.
We will literally shift into the other room for now.
Okay.
Um, even though only John is here, it is an open meeting, so if people come in, I want them to see on the screen that we've moved into executive session, this room will stay open and we'll just move in there.
Okay.
Bring your own chair, unless you wanna get there early and grab the good chairs. Um, so, um, hearing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose your intentions, okay, we move into executive session at seven fifty two P M. It is eight fifty eight P M, we are back in regular session. Um, my computer is on standby. Nope, that's not the right one. That's the right one. It's my fantastic general sheet, alright. Okay, um, items that we needed to add into the budget. Starting with the audit line, we wanna put four thousand in general water and sewer for audit preparation. Um, do you have a particular line item or spot we could put that in for now before we find the, the actual code for it?
No, thirteen twenty point four is auditor.
Oh, perfect, I'm gonna change, should I change the title to audit, auditor, or audit preparation instead of auditor?
I'll put audit slash prep, whatever.
How about auditor slash preparation? Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, um, so I am, couldn't make sure I'm in the right column first, okay, there we go. What number was that one?
Mine.
Thirteen.
Four thousands.
Thirteen twenty point four.
And I'm going to do that and I'm gonna make sure that that showed up in the formula. Let me just do my undo. Um, let's see if it's down there, fifty six. Uh, redo. Um, redo it again. It did not formulate, so I gotta add that into the formula.
A lot of the on wrong.
Sorry, guys. Okay, so that is in, general. Uh, water line.
What does that bring to, to one?
Two one five five, three one five dot two six.
I'm imagining you're gonna email me.
Send this to you before I leave this building, absolutely, yes. Um, water, is there a se- similar line number?
I don't know if there's a line of water. It'd be the same account code, just in that fund.
Alright, do you remember what that account code was?
Thirteen twenty point four.
Eighteen twenty point four.
Alright, so I'm gonna have to throw that, um.
Thirteen twenty or fourteen twenty?
It's fourteen, but I'm gonna have to copy and insert here, so give me one second here. Uh, let me throw this copy, let me insert this here, what's the number?
Fourteen twenty four.
Fourteen twenty?
Is that?
I think it's contractual.
Thirteen, thirteen twenty pointed forward. And we called it auditor slash preparation.
Audit slash preparation.
And we are going to make this a thing over here, and we're putting four thousand in here. And now I need to adjust. The formula. Okay, expense is now eight one two seven eight seven dot nineteen. And the negative is sixty thousand, eight ninety one dot nineteen. Sewer, same thing.
One thing I wanted to ask you, Rob, and I showed them, and thought of it today, the well cleaning?
Mm-hmm.
Nashville does.
Think of it as F P I mechanical, was that what you did it before? When we were looking to update the PFA waste spreadsheet, did I know?
Yeah.
Then it got pulled over well cleaning.
Yes.
And as long as it was contingent on one thing or another.
Mm-hmm.
Did you discuss any of that with them, did they email it to you?
No, but that's not a regular, you're talking about in terms of cost, or you're talking about for the budget?
Because. Yeah. Both, both.
We got the Rangers in the suite.
Yeah. I saw that in the ratchers.
I think that's gonna fall under, um.
Cause it was sustainable, a lot of that was being, gonna be allocated with the other way, but yeah, we know, that's cash out of our pocket till we get money back. It was built into the spreadsheet, I can only look at that, but I sent to you.
Right. Yes.
Just to make sure that we're not gonna be looking at that and be very, very into fund balance, cause that would be a little.
That was my first game I went.
Tight.
That's the, actually the only game I played.
Why did you have a conversation?
Let's do that tomorrow, yeah, thank you.
So that's all, that was my first game.
Now, it's linked with, not F P I.
You're right.
My, my, when we were dating, my first day, that, that was awesome, they won, uh, they won three to two, and I won in a sign running, running. They had like a sign that auction thing.
Okay, you want three numbers for sewer with it added in? Tell me when you're ready. Of course, we're gonna have to add it again, we're gonna have to change again when we add in, payroll. Eight forty five, six three six.
Is that bottom line?
This is the total expense. For sewer.
Eight forty five.
Six three six dot two two.
Okay.
Plus is thirty three, nine, seven, two, dot seven eight. Now. We said six thousand for payroll? Split?
Yeah, we said six thousand, split, no.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Alright, can you write the sum somewhere that's split for, for six, uh, six thousand times points?
Yeah.
Yeah, three ways.
So what's the percentage?
What, you mean sixty six?
Yeah, sixty six.
Six thousand payroll?
So yeah, but it's gonna be thirty nine, sixty in general.
Seventeen seventeen.
One thousand twenty in the other. Um, well, it's a good question, you know, clerk contractual wouldn't make a lot of sense. Uh, what, what number are you looking at?
Until I am passed the right turn, it's really who should be doing the payroll.
Yeah.
So.
Want to add it to contractual?
Yeah.
Uh, hey, guys, the general fund village clerk line has a village clerk contractual. We are going to add the payroll service cost that we're anticipating into this number here, so that is where it will show up as under village clerk contractual, because it's kind of thematically related. So, what's the general number?
Thirty nine sixty.
Um, uh, let's see, I have to equal one hundred plus thirty nine sixty? False.
False.
You lose, that is not an equal, alright, there we go. Cheers, alright. So that's four zero six zero there. Do you wanna see how that changes general?
Sure. Bottom line.
Twenty one fif- uh, two, two, one five nine.
Rob, can you just go over that, I got, you totally lost me.
Two seven five dot two six, and that puts us in the negative sixty four, three oh seven dot six six.
Under village clerk.
Uh, village clerk contractual, we are taking the six thousand, um, that we've set aside for payroll services.
Yeah.
Sixty six percent of that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, is here, and that's thirty nine sixty, yep.
That's what I need.
Um, and then in water, under.
Eighty, eighty three, ten point four probably.
I don't see eighty three ten.
Eighty three ten?
Oh, yep, eighty three ten, point four, contractual.
Four.
Why do you, wait, wait, eighty three ten point four?
Yeah. That's kinda like.
Yeah, that makes, that's contractual, plus, what's the number?
One thousand twenty.
Alright.
Yeah, yeah.
Fifteen eight eight. Zero, uh, zero, zero. Um, do you want the final on that one?
Uh, yeah.
Total expense, eight thirteen, eight oh seven, dot one nine, and negative sixty one, nine one one, dot one nine. Uh, sewer. Same number, right, we're gonna throw in contractual, and I'm gonna say, plus, what's the number, one thousand twenty.
Ten point four.
The last one they did, left from.
Seventeen, three oh four.
But you're projecting it and not really actual, as you go.
Total expense. Eight forty-six, six five six dot two two. And the positive, uh thirty-two nine five two dot seventy. Alright. Okay, um in my mind, we have a couple things left to discuss. I wanna revisit the police department stuff, uh since John is still here. Um we have now budgeted for uh additional treasure funds. We budgeted for additional code?
What?
I think?
Yes.
It means we put in for an additional code person, right?
I miss a what?
Additional code person?
For an assistant, yeah.
I forget where we put it, but it's there.
Thirty-six twenty.
Uh thirty-six, there it is. A vice assistant. Yes, yes. Um we've budgeted money for audit preparation, we have budgeted money for payroll services as a transition? Sorry, alright, um. What other big things do we, or do you want us, do you wanna talk police first? Anything you wanna change from what we have here? Yes.
John, at the last meeting we, I thought that you were gonna get rid of the vehicle that's falling apart. Somebody said, are you planning keeping it as a fifth vehicle?
Well, it would be like used for academy. Rather than beating the other cars, guys drive it to academy, it's spare type thing.
So you were planning on keeping it?
Yeah, cause they're using it now for academy. And it seems to work out where they drive it out.
Oh, we, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't put any income in for selling the excavator.
I thought we did.
Did we, did we do that last week?
I thought we did, we were selling.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did send their equipment and something sale.
What did we say, a hundred thousand?
We said sale property, sale equipment.
Sale equipment.
No, sale property isn't.
Yeah, we didn't do either.
No, cause we didn't have a, we didn't have a figure that we were.
I thought you did.
A number.
We still don't have a number, which was, would it be concerning to do like eighty thousand?
Probably.
No, I'm being serious.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
It's like a hundred or eighty something.
I think that, it was a hundred, it was like a hundred and thirty-six, I think, wasn't it, something around there?
And probably now it's a hundred and eighty if you had to buy a new.
Years ago.
Absolutely.
So if we throw this in as an eighty thousand dollar um expected income, are we thinking that that eighty thousand goes to a police vehicle or offsetting this or into a dump truck?
No, eighty thousand, Kenny's not, Kenny doesn't wanna put it out for sale unless it goes into a dump truck and I don't, I agree a hundred percent with him. It's gotta go with, we've all saw the condition out there, I mean Fred Flintstones be driving those trucks.
And when those, when those I D or C beams break, our most trucks were in trouble.
So if we throw this in as an income, we should also put it in the equipment as an expected expense and it's gonna zero out.
It should be going out, it should be shown as revenue, right?
It's gonna zero out the, the, the overall budget, it's not gonna change anything.
We should, we don't wanna change our budget, right?
Is that what everyone wants?
I, that's what I think, right, cause the plan is to get to.
Well, the plan is to sell it, the plan is to buy a dump truck.
Here's my question though.
To spend it, yeah, right, to spend it, right.
And the question is, you are making space in the dump truck in this budget.
With the police vehicle, would we? We would just pay the eighty right upfront, it's a one-time cost, or is it, is that something?
Well, that's an estimate too, right, John, I mean that's for dumping, you don't have any state contract price, right? But the other thing is, we also, I thought we talked about that, the police vehicle, out of the potential money coming from the settlement with DuPont.
So yeah, briefly to just kinda remind this, this is separate from Saint Combe, Honeywell, specific P F O A settlement stuff, which is very local to our situation. This is the larger settlement where we're waiting for a, the court case to finalize and then the formula to be concocted, but that could be, um. Hundred thousand, couple hundred thousand or more, we don't know yet, we're waiting for that point, we won't know that until closer to the end of this calendar year. Um but if that comes in, like if it's a hundred thousand dollars, well, you know, that could be maybe sixty thousand at a used police vehicle and twenty plus the eighty gets us a hundred thousand ahead on a dump truck and we have to go into less debt or something like that. Or it could be twenty thousand on a new water vehicle, like we'll get him a used water vehicle, it's, you know, we'll get him through.
Yeah.
We, we are not gonna know until much later in the calendar year, but it does seem like it's something that will happen at the end of this calendar year, almost definitely this fiscal year. It's just that we don't have enough yet to know exactly what it was and how to.
Do we, do we have to add it right now since we don't?
No, no, we don't have to.
No?
In fact, in. There's a couple different reasons budget-wise and otherwise that the preference from Dave would be not to, to add it. I know as, as people trying to make a budget work and knowing our, our massive equipment thing, we wanna have it in the back of our mind, but for, for planning purposes, we just don't know what it's gonna be.
What if the purposes of what we know now, we, we put in the revenue of eighty thousand dollars of sale of that equipment and we put in eighty thousand dollars spending, we're gonna go for a purchase or something, we're gonna do it.
Sure.
Right, we're not, just definitely, just definitely have it here, we're not here marketing.
We don't in Newark, we put eighty-eight.
Okay, so.
So it's zeros.
Is there a?
So in twenty-six sixty-five, sale of equipment, we're gonna put in anticipated revenue being a thousand in general.
It's bonus.
And then what we're talking about is using.
And then E P W equipment, where am I looking?
Fifty-one ten point two.
Either what, but we'll be honest with you, we order a new truck, Rob, and I prob- in, in all honesty, if we order a new truck, it's not gonna be in for probably six months to a year anyway.
Yes. That's true, so I'm gonna put in the fifty-one ten point two line, which is equi- a little bit of that right there. Um highway equipments, I'm gonna put in the same eighty thousandths.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh I pulled, I meant to do that, okay, and that should zero out, no difference, our final number at the bottom. Oh, you know what, I know why, cause the revenue didn't add the number, cause it wasn't set to, cause we don't need to have it, hold on, I got it. There we go. Okay. That should still be sixty-four three oh seven.
Two one, two three three nine?
Yes.
Two one five five.
No, we did, that just went up eighty.
Oh.
So the total expense, so revenue's all gonna be okay. Alright, um we were talking police stuff, um what I had uh cut from the initial asks was ten thousand for four recruits, I budgeted five for two recruits. Um five A E Ds for approximately eleven, I budgeted for four thousand for two. Uh new patrol vehicle, I didn't budget with hopes that later we get to budget that with.
We're already doing recruits, I mean.
Well, I was hoping to send two in the fall and two in the spring, but with that, we'll send.
But where are we right now, where's Steve and, so who, how many do we have?
We have two still in, they graduate when approximately, or they finish?
Well, they're coming out on the road, late June, July for F T O.
Mm-hmm.
August is graduation.
Mm-hmm.
And next, like he usually starts shortly after that.
That's.
So our two who are in right now will be. Cruising with our guys with F T O in June or July and August they're done, graduated.
I was gonna say, what about, that's all I was gonna say, John, that's what I was getting, where's?
He has to do, he goes this week for one class, in a couple weeks he goes back for another class and then he starts all the other stuff with him.
So he'll be doing the same second half stuff as well. So those three will be hopefully solidified, graduated in August.
So we have Steve, Sir Dan, John, Ted, and who else?
John Ted Wright, W R I D.
Ted Wright.
And then who's your rent, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask about the uniforms, that, that seems like an astronomically high amount of money for uniforms, I mean that's like.
The problem is that uniform prices are astronomically doubled.
Yeah, that's a thousand something.
Uh because you used to be able to get a shirt from, for fifty bucks. Just the basic shirt is now ninety-seven bucks. And our guys for years have not gotten uniforms or have had one. And now we're, we got everybody like a shirt and a pair of pants, but now we have to get everything.
Just to zoom in, sorry about the mouse being crazy, um this will provide all of our full-time officers with three, all part-time officers with one or two, fitting what their preference is.
Some of them said, yeah, some of them said, yeah, I only need one uniform.
Yeah.
But there's guys that don't have holsters, there's guys that don't have belts, they're using borrowed stuff from other agencies. The holster alone is two hundred and thirty-five bucks.
So this will kinda solidify things and get us.
It's insane.
It's a good example of you're like over the years, it's not doing it.
In compliance with contractually what the village is supposed to provide.
So I'm assuming that number comes down, you don't find a.
Oh yeah, this is just, this is more of a this time thing, that's a good point.
No, just like, yeah, these guys, I mean, will we in the future have to replace uniforms, yes, cause they don't last forever.
But not at this expense.
But not at that.
Right, we also have three guys coming out of the academy, right, we're gonna have three guys coming.
And there's some guys that don't even have jackets, that's a problem.
So this is a, this is a very healthy injection to get us caught up, but it won't be like this every year.
Yeah, cause that's, I mean that's, I know how much uniforms cost and you know it's.
So John, if we do two recruits in the fall, when would they graduate in a sense?
I don't know, so I don't know if they do this regularly.
Okay.
That may start in like, it may be starting in July.
So these two recruits are budgeted for, if you wanted to do two more recruits, say in the spring, you'd have to come to the board and say, hey, I want, I wanna do two more recruits, can we make that work in the budget? Or we can kinda make that decision.
Yeah, particularly if we lose people.
Yes.
We have to be flexible about that.
So, so right now we have definitely two, um I think for budgeting purposes, that's where I would like to keep it, but it doesn't close the window on it, absolutely.
Is there overtime going down?
Yes, once they're out of the academy, but now they're riding with other people, so they get a little experience.
Okay, so that's part of having recruits and having them look at.
And I mean, I hate this.
Well, our overtime isn't really going down, with between, I mean Morgan and Jasmine and Paul's dealing with, full-timer's not working overtime pretty much.
Somebody got yelled at, so.
What's that?
Somebody's got spoken to about.
Just remember, we're in opens meetings, so we're kind of approaching the line of things we wouldn't be sharing in open meetings. Specifically.
So hopefully the overtime should be going down, um and there's policies going out that should be practicing some of those.
Okay.
Um but the days of, like I saw on one of the uh police forums the other day, the days of the part-time officer unfortunately are coming to an end. Quickly. And you gotta, you've gotta start thinking to the future, having our full-time officers.
The ammo line, is that, is that includes the, the new clocks? What is sixty-five hundred bucks in?
Ammo.
That includes qualification ammo?
Yeah, but that's, I, so I did the math, when I saw that line, I did the math, at current prices for two-two-three and forty Smith and Wesson, it's about sixteen or seventeen thousand rounds of ammo. It's thirty-two cents for a forty, it's forty-three cents, whatever on contract for a two-two-three, it came out to be like sixteen thousand rounds of ammo, I mean that's, that's an enormous, that's like.
I think the recruits bring three thousand on, per recruit.
To um.
Yeah, cause we just bought, we just bought it, how much was the last, we just bought it recently, it was like fifty-five hundred bucks, wasn't it, something like that?
For what?
I forget what it was, yeah, we bought it and it just, we just got it.
Ammo.
Yeah, we ordered it.
It has been ordered, it did order previously.
So a recruit usually, he uses three thousand in the training, is that something?
Something like that, I think it's like two thousand ball and a thousand of hollow and range. Starting this fall, it's no longer one week, it is two weeks.
In training?
Yeah.
Really? Huh, what made that change?
That's a great question.
How often do you guys have to re-qualify to?
We do it once a year, but we wanna do it twice because we wanna try to do like we should do.
Night shooting?
We're gonna do it, this year we're actually gonna do a night evening shoot on May eleventh.
What's the idea?
Um that is the only man.
No, 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 moving on. I'm gonna throw my shoe at you to do that again, man, alright.
So we're gonna try to do range twice a year, we issue a night shoot.
Well, it sounds like you're waiting on ammo, so you'll have the, you'll have the budget to spend it if you need to. And, and just to reiterate, this budget for police is exceptionally important because it hasn't been as defined and specific as it, as, as, as this is now. Which has really handcuffed the police department in trying to do what they need to do.
No fun, no pun intended.
What I, what?
Handcuffed the police department.
Oh gosh. Love dad jokes, I missed it, jeez.
Just one more question on the A E Ds, are they going, is, is it going to, I see there's one for the municipal building lobby, is it going to the police cars in the lobby or what do you gotta do?
If we're only getting two, it's gonna be up to.
Oh, okay.
To the two cars.
Only two is going into the cars.
Do we have one in the lobby now?
No.
We do not.
We do not.
So passing this budget, we can have our consent, that if resources are available, we'd be looking at police equipment in the course of year.
In, in, in the near future.
This allows a dump truck, this allows a dump truck, yeah.
That's, that is absolutely our goal. And frankly, if we don't have that by close to the end of this coming fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five, I think we have to look to short-term.
You wanna, yes.
Like the standard way to do it, because we're just going to need it, like, we're just going to need it all.
So if the bank?
So once we do like an inventory of everything, should we put into our yearly budget?
Our in, yes.
Yeah, I mean, come on.
That's what we're looking to.
Well, the problem, the problem is making you think about, yeah, it's been a.
I know, and I know, I get it, I really do.
Because you're, the problem is, you're talking for our salary cap, that's what we're screwed by.
I know, we had done this years ago, we actually have a plant.
The salary cap.
But we're, we're so behind on this.
The budget.
We wouldn't, I mean, we wouldn't have two thousand five or two thousand one vehicles rotting without a plant.
Yeah.
Right.
And we do need to set it up, so it's more, it's.
Yeah, but I think that if we get a good injection of funds that allows us to make some purchases now, that we're finally in a good spot to do that.
But it has, we have to all be like, this is what we need to do, for the future.
Yep. Yep.
Has the oldest cop car got enough life to be a code enforcement? I know, didn't do that before?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, the, the problem is, the police car needs to have six, seven cars.
Excuse me. That was before my time.
Why would we have that many cars?
Well, the problem is, you have four cars, you have two people working, sometimes three. So that car is just running, going four or seven, not stop, going, going, going.
So the more cars we have, the more the workload is distributed.
There's a car for every person, that's how I'm doing, right?
Why wouldn't we need six or seven?
Well, we're getting busier and the cars are running.
I think um, the, the parade days are where we have the biggest exposure and, and most regular needing four or more cars. Uh in other, in other ways, as soon as we're down a car, it makes things really hard. God forbid we go down two cars.
No, no, I, I, I agree with it, but six or seven, I mean, parade is two hours twice, twice a year.
Yeah. I personally have only seen four vehicles here. Um, do you remember when there was five or six? Cause when I started in twenty seventeen, that vehicle was already in the codes hands.
I mean, that's Bernie.
Bernie would probably.
Bernie said there would be three.
Okay, he, he, he remembers all that stuff.
That was maybe when Bernie was a kid.
I, I mean, it would be great if we had a, a, a fifth, even if we had one extra one for, you know, little like errand brothers like that, recruits, that sort of thing, but we have someone needs right now, it's.
And these guys are released?
I'm trying to figure it out.
That's, yeah, that's another option.
I think a code enforcement car would be great.
We'll give code enforcement.
That would send a message to this.
No, that's what we had, that's what we had.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he didn't have license and everything on it.
Yeah.
You could call it. How like the boys.
You can park it here.
Well, it, well, it used until, until it stopped running.
And then another one for myself.
That was a bad car.
I've thought about that, I'd actually thought about it, I'd actually my computer switch.
Tried to get, tried to use that one, the other suburban tool, but that, we're gonna use that with that, and then.
So that's something I'm, I've been thinking about.
What, it'll never sell it.
Who values a car?
It's, yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it will only be a few other to get it. Um. So are there any other budget things we wanna change, or are we feeling like this is it?
So where are we at the bottom line?
The bottom line, that's a great, great, general funds, we are, um if we spend everything, sixty-four thousand three hundred and seven additional. The bottom line, it's a great, great, general funds, we are, um, if we spend everything, sixty-four thousand three hundred and seven additional, so we would be committing sixty-four thousand three hundred and seven seventy-six out of our fund balance for general. What's that?
It's about twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent of the fund balance, I think.
What, did you, you sent, did you send it out, Doug, trying to what the fund balance was, did you send it?
Is that like three-eight-four right now?
It was around three.
Three-four?
Three-four, yeah. Three-eight-four, if twenty-three, twenty-four has a surplus, that looks like any. Yes, that's about.
That's about. Yeah, it's about twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, straight up.
That's gone down, but we, we changed some projected, so we were projecting one-sixty-four before.
Okay.
One-sixty-six, now we're down to one-fifty-four, so it's actually three-eight-four, take away twelve.
Alright. Okay, um, in terms of water, um, at the end of the day, we are looking to be sixty-one-nine-one-one dot one-nine in the negative, if everything is spent. And sewer, woo, let's do it sewer.
Lots of sewage.
There we go.
Victory.
Thirty-two-nine-five-two in the plus, good job.
With ten thousand contingency.
With ten thousand contingency, that's right, and that's our lowest one, so it's good that we're doing that in there, so. Is, uh, are we all set?
All set.
Alright, now you gotta bear with me while I find the resolution. I may have to adjust this for our cur, I definitely have to adjust this for our current date, I will get you a hard copy of this resolution. Okay, so in front of the board, and I'm gonna just review, please review this with me as I go to make sure, I just had to change the date right now. Um, resolution adopting the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget for the Village of Music Falls. Tentative budget was filed, village trustees reviewed the tentative budget, made changes, alterations, or revisions. Board trustees called for public hearing on the preliminary budget, which we did, um, I could add the additional special meetings, but that's fine, we don't need it. Uh, village board trustees, oh, and times and places, didn't notice the public hearing, yep, did it, did all that. Um, requires a budget, no later than the first day of May, which we're squeaking. Uh, desires to adopt the preliminary budget as amended and revised as the annual budget Village of Music Falls for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Now therefore be resolved by the board trustees of the Village of Music Falls, a regular session of the convenience follows that the village board trustees does hereby adopt preliminary budget as amended and revised, a copy of which is attached hereto and made a part hereof as the annual budget Village of Music Falls for the fiscal year beginning on first day of June twenty-twenty-four, and as such budget as adopted be entered in detail in the minutes of proceedings in the village board trustees. Um, and be it, no, that's it, that's it, done, I don't know why that's there. Period. I feel like that was gonna specify the, the, the normal filing that we have to do within the state, but that's all normal stuff, we don't need that in the resolution. There's a deadline that we have to file this within the, I forget which office it is, alright, so I need someone to offer the resolution.
I'll move, I'll second.
And second by. Oh, Deputy Mayor Ryan, okay. I'm just gonna type it in. Okay, um, roll call votes, trustee Shuddick. Okay, uh, trustee Hanselman.
Yay.
Well, I'm gonna, uh, trustee Alter.
Yes.
Trustee Walry.
Yes.
Trustee Sour.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
I will also vote a yes. So it passes unanimously, uh, this will be, uh, resolved tonight. Thank you, everybody.
All, all within.
Very much, uh, hugely important process.
Dan.
Thank you, uh.
Huh?
Uh, quarter to seven?
Okay.
Yeah, it was like six-four or something, yeah, I'm like getting my vibe, getting paid.
It was, it was, yeah, I think it was six forty, six forty-two, I think six forty-two was when I noticed it.
I just have to note it.
I'm like clocking.
Um, it's just for the, the minutes, that's how.
Trustee Shuddick.
It was delin, he was delinquent till six-four.
Um.
Delinquent. Maybe in that whole.
Let the record show.
If you guys want, I have a very brief updated executive session, but I don't need to do it now, if you don't want, we can simply adjourn, it's up to you guys.
Let's adjourn.
Okay, I agree with that, so at nine-thirty-two PM, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I adjourn.
Uh, Dan, second, Deb, further discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed or abstentions? It carries, we are adjourned at nine-thirty-two PM.
Aye.
Thank you all.